United States of America and a two to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Kathy will now call the roll.
Councilmember Halford.
Here.
Councilmember Holmstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Storm.
Here.
Councilmember Crabblet.
He will be here shortly.
Councilmember Zerfing.
Here.
And Mayor Masters.
Here. Thanks Kathy. So this is a work session of the council. Cascade Locks tonight. We have a number of items on our agenda. Primarily is orientation to city finance. And here to lead this up is Mary Ann, our financial officer. And it looks like you have an agenda and I'm gonna let you go through each of those items.
Okay.
Right there.
Alright, thank you that's for Mayor Masters, sorry. What Paul and I had worked up was to go through the financials, page by page. If you have any questions. I think it's important for all council to understand the funds that are involved in the financial. I know some of you do, but maybe some of you don't. And so I just wanna briefly go through those. It's not gonna be much more than five, 10 minutes, so much of your questions. I'm really gonna kinda rush through it. I did, I do wanna quantify though, that the reports that you have, that we're gonna go through, the sample reports, no way reflect the balances in the financials. I don't want you to get the impression that these are the totals in here, okay? I haven't verified them and I don't want that relationship out there yet until I have verified that. The financials that you have in front of you tonight, is the updated to November and please disregard your last ones that you got, because I did have an adjustment that I found that I had due. And so please take these home and discard the other ones you took home two weeks ago, okay? In the general fund, which is our first fund, I do wanna stipulate that the general fund supports seven different departments. So on the first page, and I'm sorry Gail, I didn't number these pages.
That's okay, I can go slow and I'll keep it.
But I will get that numbering down real quick. Like I said, the general fund supports seven departments.
Could you, could you just help us out on which, I had several different papers.
I'm on, I'm on the financial report, the forty-two page financial report.
At the top, what is it, at the top of the first page?
It says revenues with comparison to budget for five months, ending on November thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Could someone pull that out for, for Tom, for when he walks in? Sorry to back up.
That's okay, no problem.
Sure, well I'm.
Our revenues that are generated from the general fund primarily comes from internal payments of the, from the enterprise funds, some state revenues, cigarette tax, also state revenue sharing, but for the most part, and property tax, but for the most part, that is our revenue base. We don't have too many fees that the citizens pay, copy fees, fax fees, information services, that they are not, they do not generate the revenue, as does property tax and internal payments. The next page, the second page, you'll see is the administration charges. That is, the administration is the office upstairs here. That's the clerk, or the city recorder, the front desk, the county, and myself, and also the city administrator. That is what the administration department is. The next page, the third page, you'll see the planning department on the top. That is one of the seven departments that the general fund supports. And depending on the type of planning that goes on, or construction, then this is, the revenues usually generated that is an in and out. We don't usually get too many fees associated with revenue enhancements. So this is mainly an in and out. The next department is property. Property department is primarily this building. If they did work at the sewer plant, the water, the maintenance for those is charged to those departments. Property is usually this building and the grounds around this building. The next one is the beautification department. This department was created by our budget committee last year to take over the flowers and the seasonal employment, public works employment for watering the flowers. So we, we, they, they asked that this department be created. The museum is the cost of operating the museum with personnel approximately five months out of the year, May through September.
Could, could we back up for just a beautification?
Sure.
Is this okay to ask questions?
Yes, please do.
So what, how was that created? Cause I know that there's a tourism and beautification committee created by ordinance, but this fund was created by the budget committee?
Yeah.
So it wasn't created by a resolution or ordinance or anything like that?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So it was just the budget committee established the fund?
Yes, they took the, the contract landscape flowers plus the labor that tourism was, was paying for and moved it into the general fund to pay for it.
Okay.
So the money's were taken out of general fund for this?
Yeah.
Okay.
And all, these first few that you're going through are all general fund?
This is all general fund, everyone? Everybody understand that the general fund supports seven departments, so that you understand how this works.
But it's just, it's just, I just wanna make sure we get that point though, that there's a, an ordinance that creates the tourism and beautification committee?
Yes.
That's operating, that's not operating out of the general fund?
That's correct.
But there's a beautification fund?
Department.
A beautification department that is now operating out of the general fund?
Yes. And the next one is museum. As I said, we, we pay for personnel to operate the museum five months out of the year. Government and community relations, that's primarily council. And then any community relations that we need to do for the council, if you wanted to go to training, we have, we had money in the budget for training.
Right. Sorry to do this again, but can we back up to museum?
Yes.
So if, when you talked about planning, you talked about it's sort of a, an in and out?
Most of the planning is.
Yes. Is that also true of museum? How does museum generate its revenue? Is it general fund or is it income from the museum?
It's general fund dollars that pays for the personnel. Now, the museum does take in donations during the five months. And we do run those donations through our books. We received it in and we pay it back. They have a fund that they use to buy supplies, buy museum artifacts, things that they want to enhance the museum. That's what they use that money for, is to mainly buy things. You know, if somebody came, hey, I'd like to, you know, I have these arrowheads, maybe they need to purchase them. I don't know, but, but they have used it to buy their supplies also. It means all clean supplies, anything that they need there, that's what they use that money for. Now that's been set up for many years.
That was created years ago based upon an audit recommendation that even though they manage the money, there ought to be a, a track of the revenue and the expense through the city.
So, so I'm just trying to clarify, the revenue that comes in from donations, people visiting?
Mm-hmm.
But, how, how is that reflected, is that reflected here?
That's not reflected in this department.
That's, that goes into something else.
That goes to another department.
So similar to what we just talked about with beautification?
It's, it's actually a museum trust fund is what it's titled, the museum trust.
So, so for personnel expenses, we're taking out of general fund?
Yes.
To pay for our, those expenses are?
For personnel and utilities of the museum, yes, comes out of general fund.
So that's, so there's another divide there?
There is a divide, yes.
Between other funds and general fund, but we're using general fund to pay for it?
Mm-hmm.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any questions on government and community relations? As to what that department actually pays for? Okay, the next program is recreation program. Again, we, we pay for the recreation program. We pay for the, the activity coordinators, the summer rec director, also the supplies that they need comes out of general fund. Now, they do charge a small activity fees, like quarter a night, and those revenues come in and they are reflected in the revenue of the general fund. As of right now, their year-to-date total is a hundred and seventy dollars. So it's not a, by any means able to support itself. Any questions on that program? Okay. The final department that the general fund has is the police. This was the department where the OEO officer was paid out of, but when it was taken off, then it's just for the contract of the police, Hoover County.
Has that department changed its revenue source, or has it always been constantly paid through the general fund?
It's always been paid through the general fund. Any questions on the general fund? Okay.
So you said, you said seven departments?
We have seven different departments, yes. Did I sound wrong?
Oh.
Did I sound wrong or correct?
Alright, I was trying to make sure I have it like that. I feel a bit, so I just, if I have it wrong?
I don't, I don't take administration. I don't, I don't, so if you add administration, yes. The next one is the systems development revenues and system development charges. This is where any construction, any houses being built, if they connect to sewer, water, there's an SDC charge that all new, new housing and new buildings must pay. And that's what these funds would be, is in SDCs. We currently have, if I'm currently, if I'm wrong, have the parks, water, and sewers, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Of SDCs that we can collect. And that fee is set by resolution, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you can turn a couple more pages to see the, this next one is street fund. And this one is state gasoline tax is its major source of income. It has, if you go to the next page, operations department, that is part of the city administrator's wage comes out of that. And then of course your utility worker one, utility worker two, and public works superintendent. This is primarily public works, one section of the public works department, the street. Any questions on street?
I, I, yeah, one.
Uh-huh.
I, I don't see the public works director charging time, so I guess he don't do much there?
Yes, well, the, the public works, due to the change of, from a employee to contracted service, you'll see that April, May, and June, he was put into contract services miscellaneous because there was.
Okay.
Because it wasn't budgeted, so it was charged to miscellaneous, it wasn't budgeted as a public works superintendent. Starting July, he does have a line item contract service PW superintendent. And that's where he's being charged as of July, as of the new budget.
And, and can you clarify just roughly what his compensation is for how much time?
Yes, I can. He, he currently is, there's a budget of thirty-five thousand dollars in, in the line items. It comes from property, street, water, and sewer. He is paid a hundred dollars, basic fee rate per visit, plus any testing, repair expense to the facilities that need to be. And then his, any additional work is forty dollars an hour. His hours that he is to be here is an average between eight and twenty hours per week. And those are varied.
Those are what?
Varied. No set date. Well, there was set dates Tuesdays and Thursdays, but we sometimes see him on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Sometimes he'll be your Wednesdays or Fridays.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on street? Okay, emergency services. This is the department where fire and ambulance are charged to. We get property tax. Forty-two percent of the property tax that comes into the city is transferred to fire EMS or the emergency service. We also get med life contracts from them, from Hoover County. Rural fire protection from the, what we call South Bank customers, that's the Wyatt, yeah, Memorial Dodge area.
You know, it says there the miscellaneous incomes of the budget of two thousand, but the year-to-date was actual a hundred and thirty-two dollars. What is that source?
Miscellaneous income is burning permits, most of it. And because of the burn ban that lasted for so long this year, I'm sure that's down. But they'll start picking up. We've already got some for this winter time, if they're starting to burn, so. Next page is your expenses. For emergency services. And the next one is the administration department of emergency services. That encompasses, again, city administrator, financial officer, county department office assistant. What, what this covers is the processing of the bills, cause we do get, we do bill for services on the utility bill. We also field phone calls and of course minutes readings. And this is a percentage basis. Any questions on, on EMS? Next page is the nine-one-one emergency telephone. This is an in and out. We received that money and we immediately cut a check to the county. So it doesn't sit too long here. If you go a few more pages, you'll see grant revenue. The only thing we have on the books this year for grants is a thousand dollars from Department of Land Conservation. That is a planning grant. Should we require planning services, we can use that thousand dollars to pay for our plan. And I believe this is a two-year grant, so we'll be up to this year. Is that right Kathy? We can vote on that share? Any questions on grant? If you'll turn a couple more pages, see tourism revenues. This is your tourism and beautification for the women's. Their primary income is room assessment, TRT tax.
Thirty, thirty percent?
Yes, thirty percent. And our next page would be their expenditures, their marketing, their to-dos and publications, any advertising they do. We also contribute to the fireworks out of this fund.
Hey, I, I got a question. You know, we went through and revised the resolution that covered expenditures for departments. And tourism is covered by an ordinance.
Yes.
But if I recall, that ordinance states that their expenditures are to be approved by council?
Yes.
But I don't remember in any of our council meetings reviewing any of their expenses to approve them in, in the last couple of months.
The, the ones that I know that have been approved are, have been approved through contracts, like the flowers, the web design, those are the ones, and that, the concert that we had down here. Those are the ones that I know that you approved. As far as approving any advertising or, or brochures, you would, would approve the brochures, cause it's probably over the city administrator's limit. But if it was not, you know, they have not, they have not been bringing those.
So I, I don't have a ordinance from anybody, is it written that the city administrator can approve amounts for tourism, or is it?
Will be and has to come from council. Is that correct?
So section seven of ordinance two fifty-nine says, "All funds budgeted and appropriated by the city of Cascade Locks for tourism and beautification promotion shall be expended in the same manner as our other city funds."
Oh, okay.
So there's probably some ambiguity there.
Yeah.
Um, what, what section six says is, "The actual application, management, and direction of the program of tourism and beautification promotion planned by the committee shall be the responsibility of the city council."
Okay.
Various elements of which they may choose to delegate to city officers or others.
Okay.
So, another layer of ambiguity there, but it, that, that, I believe that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, right.
That the, the sole responsibility of the, the whole tourism and beautification program rests with the city council, unless it's delegated.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted a clarifying question. When I'm looking at the department, operations department, and I look under the training and others, it shows a five hundred dollar budget for that item. And for training and travel, there's three thousand dollars budgeted for the tourism fund. So professional training for city staff, you're only allocated five hundred dollars for all of staff. So if you have a class, Portland, to pay for it, and the class would be a hundred or two hundred dollars, your class would pretty much eat up the training budget for the city for one person. Where it's budgeted for three thousand dollars for?
Are you talking about the government and community relations or what?
I was looking just in, uh, training, travel and training.
In which fund?
In operations, which was, operations department.
Oh.
I lost that.
But if I understand what your question is, yes, travel and training, you have to have a five hundred dollar.
Yeah, your budget, five hundred dollars?
Five hundred dollars.
Out of your, out of the city staff department for travel and training. And tourism has three thousand dollars for travel and training, okay?
One thing I do wanna note that the travel and training for city staff is usually spread between all the departments. Not tourism, but all of the other departments, because when we go for training, we are actually learning things that will benefit all departments.
All the departments, okay.
So it is spread out.
But then if it's like, if it's just travel and training for city works, that still comes, they're only the employees?
It's usually, if it's just for public works, it's usually charged to them?
For them. But you can draw, but you would, part of that training is drawn out for you though, a percentage of that. So really they could get shorted a percentage of that if it's, cause it's divided out. It's fuzzy math, but it's, yeah, okay.
It's fuzzy math.
Really?
On, uh, Mary Ann, on, on tourism, you have a beginning balance of fifty thousand dollars. That's from the prior year, I assume. Current revenues, and you build a budget, you have ninety-two thousand total available. And then on the expenditure side, that's the part I don't understand, on the expenditure side, we're, we're budgeted to shoot the law?
Yes, you are.
Rather than having another cash carryover into the next year?
You're actually looking at a, you are actually correct, I don't see a contingency there.
It's there.
Oh, there it is.
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand nine hundred and thirty. So if you were, in, in my mind, if you were wanting to save money, you would've made that contingency more. You have to have a balance of revenues and expenditures.
And you can't balance a ending fund balance as a line item?
The city does not. The city does not.
But that's where contingency usually comes in.
But that's why the contingency is because?
Gets used for that?
Cause that, that usually is carried forward, and that's part of our beginning balance. So in my mind.
So it kind of overinflates the monies that are available, cause you're really, your current revenues?
Yes, because they're, they're using their beginning balance. They're budgeting to use it.
And the budget, and this has been going on for years.
Not necessarily do they use it, but they are budgeting to use it. And I wanna keep that in, in your mind, that it's budgeted, but we don't, we try not to use it all. Just cause it's there doesn't mean we can spend it. You have to look at, and I stress that, you have to look at your revenues. If you're only bringing in twenty thousand dollars in revenues, you should not be spending any more than what you're bringing in, okay? You don't bank on what you're gonna bring in in the next month. You've got to watch your revenues versus your expenditures.
But as far as us coming up with a system to monitor accounts with this new, you know, software program, that's gonna be an aspect of all of this, what, what do we wanna look at? We're always gonna look like, oh, we're not spending what we had budgeted. It's always gonna look good, but in reality, we wanna plan on fifty thousand dollars, just to pick a number, that's, that's, that's rolling between the budgets.
You should always have.
And we should really be looking at a forty thousand dollar budget rather than a ninety-two thousand dollar budget.
Yeah, we could do that.
To, to monitor it, to see.
And that's what contingency does. It is, if you say, oh, we're not gonna spend twenty thousand dollars, we're gonna roll that forward, or whatever, we're at fifty, then that's where I would put the money, so that it's not touched, and it all, it does become like a beginning balance.
And this, this is kind of an important point, that I think, and hopefully you'll correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's important that we stress here that the budget is not a precise document, that this is, these are going to be actual expenditures. Sometimes we, and, and revenue, sometimes we lose sight of that and think, well, if it's the budget, then that's what, exactly what's gonna happen. The budget is always an estimate. It's a plan for the whole year. And things happen throughout the year. You don't get the revenues you think, or you get more revenues than you think. But, but as we go through, as we start going into the budget process, we, we have to keep that in mind. We're setting a plan for how the city is going to collect revenue and expend funds, but it's just a plan. It's not, it's not a precision of this is exactly what's going to happen.
That is correct. There, there's, this is just a plan. It's not a guarantee. There's nothing. It's a plan for council and, and department heads and employees to see, this is what our plan is, but if things don't go right, this plan will be changed.
Or if things go better than expected?
Right.
Yeah.
But even if things, and I wanna stress, even if things go better than expected, just because we have a windfall, a hundred thousand dollars, it's not been budgeted, you can't spend it. You cannot do that unless it's been budgeted for. So that money is, is non-touchable unless you do a supplemental budget. So just keep that in mind. Not that windfalls gotta come in, but it's a whole ball.
Well, it's Christmas.
And I, as I understand it, your resume runs from June to, June to June, right?
July to June.
July to June. So, and, so what happens here is this, and area departments can be a little bit different. Where tourism's getting their money from TRT. TRT comes in on the, comes in quarter, is that right? So the reason you need the carryover, especially to tourism, is you can, you spend all this money, which you can, but you're gonna be out in June, and you gotta be waiting, now you're waiting for money to come. You don't get any money between that and August. So between June and August, you can, the next quarter, you could be, you could be broke, you could just spend all your money by the end of that thing, and then now you're waiting on money. So that, as I understand that the, the carryover, especially for like tourism, is because you have, you're, you're bringing the money every three months, not every month. You gotta make sure you have the money.
That's correct. You only get it every, every quarter. That is correct. That's correct. You only get it every, every quarter. That is correct.
So, so if your revenues are there, there's no need for carryover, if you know the money's, if you're being paid every week or whatever, you don't need it, because the, the money's gonna be there next week. But in this one, you have to have some carryover because you only get it every three months.
Well, all the funds, all the funds should have carry, all the funds should have beginning balance if you're bound, if you're watching your budget right. You should always have beginning balance.
Because?
Because you never want to spend exactly what you budgeted. You're always watching to save money. Um, you, you never spend it all.
So, but with that, then the, the beginning balance doesn't necessarily have to be very much, though, just as long as you got a, a beginning balance, right?
In theory, yes. In theory.
So you don't need a great big beginning balance, you just, tourism may be a little larger one, because they gotta go where water, sewer, power, they're gonna get a new, another paycheck every month. Tourism's gonna, it's gonna be three months before they get a paycheck, so they gotta, they, they have to carry a little more carryover than than anybody else.
So, and just a question to go along with what Tom said. Your carryovers, so if you budgeted five hundred dollars for eternity fees, and they unexpectedly go over their five hundred dollar budget, you can pull from contingency to pay for those? No?
No, contingency is used as an emergency, um, and I, I really try to stay with that theory as an emergency. If you overspend a line item, that, that, that's, and I say this okay, because the, the key for working budget law is the category dollar. Your category is materials and services. If you overspend travel and training by five hundred, but you underspend special promotions by five hundred, you've balanced it. And, and that's the key, and that's what you want to watch. I don't want to overspend line items, but it's not the end of the world if you do that, because you can save money in other line items. And then that's where you have to lock.
Thank you.
And, and just getting back to the, the whole point about revenues being generated quarterly versus monthly, which some of our, I'm sure some of our funds when you come to, you'll, they'll have that, because the, you know, utilities get, get paid monthly. But general fund, um, comes out of-
We, we get monthly from the internal payments from the enterprise funds.
And, and then there's also property tax, which is not gonna-
Property tax, because it's quarterly.
It might be quarterly, it might, it might be different depending on how, when people choose it.
When they pay.
So, so a lot of the different funds have disparities of, of when the revenue comes in, which is, which is why we, we have this complicated budget document, which helps us track those, um, those revenues as they come in, and, and we have to, as Marianne keeps saying, we have to continually keep an eye on the, on the budget, which is just our plan for how we're gonna expend that, because there's always going to be a disparity in, in how that comes in. In the past, for example, emergency services, part of our budget has been revenue generated. Well, then, as we've learned, the revenue that gets generated by billing, um, ambulance calls, um, it's, it's not monthly, it's not quarterly, you know, it's, it's, in some cases, it's at the whim of an insurance company. And so the, it, so all, as, as we look at all our different sources of revenue, we have different expectations for when, when we're gonna generate that, and all of those have to be factored into our, to our budget. Gail, thanks for waiting.
The, the old concept used to be that we want to try to ensure there was a billi- beginning balance in each fund to allow for the necessary expenses to be paid out of beginning balance through first quarter. Because even like electrical, you know, their revenues, the bill goes out with the end of June.
The end of the month.
And so you wouldn't get those monthly revenues until July.
July.
But they still have expenses in June before they receive that year's revenue. And, and if they had discretionary projects in January, February, and March, then they needed to put more in beginning balance to cover that expense above and beyond their revenues, or delay that expenditure until the revenues caught up. So the guideline, old school, we used to use was, you know, the ideal was try to have ninety days of expenses in your beginning balance going forward.
Okay, anything else, um, on tourism? Okay, the next fund, um, is museum. Mayor, this is the, the one that where donations come in to the city, and then on the next page, you see that it goes right back out to museum, um, account. This is the account that they have, that they monitor, and they buy only the necessities that they need.
Is, is that different than the front page where it shows a thousand dollars? And then it is different?
This is just primarily donations. They call this, and I've gotta change the wording on this financial, it's a museum trust fund.
So it's the cash box where they donate?
This is the money that, that donated by tourists down at the museum, and they send it up to city hall, we count it, we run it through our books, and then we run it right back to them.
Then on the, what's on the front page today?
The front page is their personnel expense and the utilities.
Um, I'm, on your, uh, I'm talking about the administration fund, museum donations and grants is a thousand dollars.
Okay, they do give, I'm sorry, you're right, Randy. Um, they do give us a thousand dollars of their donation a year.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I forgot that. They do. They write us a check for a thousand dollars a year for what? For to help towards paying their personnel and utilities.
So that thousand is part of this twenty-five hundred?
Yes, you could say that.
Okay.
Because that's where the money comes from. Thank you for pointing that out. I completely missed that one. Any more questions on museum? Okay, the next fund, cemetery fund. Um, this is the revenues that we get in from, uh, the sale of cemetery plots, opening, closing. That's primarily where the revenue comes from.
Hey, I got a, I do got a question. I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but eh, to me, the museum is a tourist activity. I just wonder why that's not paid out of tourism? Or is that one of those things that isn't covered by touristy law?
That's a good question. I don't know if it is covered by-
Alright, so you don't remember any discreet targeted discussion about that? Okay.
It's certainly something that, that we can discuss in our, you know, on the, the boards and commissions, because I think that there's also an ordinance that creates the museum committee.
Right, okay.
Right, and in terms of the ORS, that's, that, that governs expenditure of certain, a certain percentage of transient room tax dollars, one of the thi- one of the things in there is facilities designed to attract tourists.
Okay, alright.
But buildings.
So it may be appropriate, okay.
So I can't, I mean, I, I think anyone that, any layperson like I am that looks at a law and tries to interpret it for themselves runs the risk of, you know, misinterpreting it.
Yeah.
Just why sometimes people hire attorneys.
Yeah, well, and we got people out there to help us interpret.
Yes.
But it, either Gail or, or Lance pointed out, thirty percent of the TRT money goes to the tourism fund.
Yes.
And seventy percent comes to the general fund that pays for the museum, so we just, so it is, you could say that it is paid for out of that, but not just separately.
It's paid out of the general fund.
Right, but sev- but seventy percent of the TRT money goes to the general fund.
That's right.
Which more than pays for a museum.
It appears so.
What, just for dollars?
Okay, cemetery, any questions on cemetery? The update, update of the cemetery, um, basically went in.
And cemetery trust fund.
That's, this is the cemetery revenue, cemetery fund, not the trust fund.
Okay, well, I, I guess I went to the expense.
Okay, this, you have cemetery revenues, which is generated from, uh, the opening, closing, and sale of the plot. Then you have cemetery expenditure. That is what, um, we pay for public works to mow the grass or, um, water, whatever, uh, opening and closing, if they have to take the, the backhoe down and utilize it. That's where these expenses are, are coming out of. It's not coming out of water, it's not coming out of sewer, it's out of cemetery.
But towards the bottom of that page, you have the cemetery tr- transfer, the cemetery trust fund.
That's correct.
What's?
The cemetery trust fund, as we get back into this, uh, is my understanding, that is a trust fund that eventually is going to hopefully take care of the cemetery. That is the purpose of the trust. It's a perpetual, is, is to help some, help take care of the cemetery, so that the city doesn't, I don't know if it does perpetual care or-
Well, I, I, I think that fund was created, again, based upon legal and, and audit requirements, that if you have a cemetery, that you have to put money away for its perpetual care.
Perpetual care, yeah.
In case we- So, well, later in this document, we'll see where that six thousand years has been building up, and we have a larger fund? Six, a little larger, okay. Tom?
It's one of that same thing with, uh, was it two? I think, is that also the, I know there's part of this thing somewhere where, um, just to go purchase more land once your cemetery fills up. Or we can away money that, um, allows us to buy more land for, to expand the cemetery.
And, and perhaps that's why the, the cemetery trust fund is small. I don't know what they use to purchase the extra land that they just purchased many years, several years ago when we were starting to run out of room. Um, and perhaps that is what the cemetery trust fund. There is a, an ORS that defines what you can use the trust money for, um, and I honestly have not looked at that.
Um, yeah, yeah, no, the trust fund money was not used to purchase that land. But I think, you know, looking at many years ahead, there should be a line item created for funding addition, uh, cemetery expansion, because I helped facilitate the last expansion, and, and it was a Chinese fire drill to, to get it done, because we were down to, I don't know, less than, I don't know, ten or fifteen-
Less than ten, I think.
Uh, planters or, I mean, you know, bare plots.
Pots.
And, uh, and it was only because I'd worked with the guy that was doing the, doing the cul-de-sac there, loose circle, that, uh, worked on the city's behalf to nego- negotiate a purchase of one lot to expand it. But I don't know where we are, how many years we have of that location, but, you know, when people start talking about division in thirty years or something like that, that, that may be an issue to start putting a little bit of money away over a year or so. There is some money to do something, anyway.
And currently, there is no line item or anything to, to save for another possible land acquisition for the cemetery.
Right, okay.
The next fund is the water fund. That is, uh, revenues from basically water sale, water maintenance fees. And then this expenditures is for the public works to maintain our water system. They hire seasonal employees during the summer months to also, uh, help offset the, um, the mowing, the weeding, the things that, that, uh, public works can't get to. That is also part of this, this department.
On the, on the revenue page, um, it says from electric.
Uh, electric pays us, um, money to, to, uh, go out and read their mushroomers. They actually pay for our employees to, to do that. Any questions on water? A little about two pages back is again our administration department. Um, again, that's the upstairs department that produces the, the bills, answers the phones, anything that, that has to do with, uh, that fund. Just addressed to this. Now, again, that is a percentage, um, it's not hour for hour, it's a percentage, so. It is questioned, it has been questioned by the budget committee, uh, last year, and has been questioned by staff. Are those percentages good? Um, I think you'll find that, uh, I raised that question with Paul last week. The percentage was done many, many years ago. I ask that we can attest to that perhaps those percentages are off, we just don't know. And, um, I think Paul's gonna address that in the upcoming, uh, in the chapter. Okay, the next one is the cemetery trust revenues that, that Randy had talked about. We have a beginning balance from last year of seventy-five hundred dollars. The budget committee did transfer more money into, uh, the, um, trust fund this year than usually is about two thousand dollars, roughly. Uh, this year they opted to do six. So again, it is a small trust fund. It does have a contingency of thirteen nine, so, um, it's about all this, this left in a thirteen thousand measure. After that is your sewer fund. These are revenues from sewer service fees. Out of this fund comes, um, bond payments. The sewer bond fund and the O E D D loan fund will be, um, payment of the sewer treatment plan.
Do you know how much longer we have on that, on replacement or repayment?
On the sewer bond nineteen eight ninety-eight, um, I believe that we can pay it off next budget year. But the, uh, sewer, excuse me, the O E D D loan, if we can pay off next budget year. The sewer bond fund, I believe, still has, I'm guessing, at least ten years left, if not more.
Okay.
I'd have to look at the amortization term.
Right, I just think that's something to look at sometime, because I can't remember, I, I was on council, I think, when we re-engineered the sewer, but I can't remember if that had like a twenty-year lifespan or, or what. But it seems like if you project the end of a lifespan, one, you should start funding for something new, and two, you should pay off, target paying off the loans on the current plan, but just long-range issue.
I do know that the auditor will put an amortization schedule in your audit that you get in February that will show, uh, the years that we have.
Okay.
I'm not sure it goes clear to when we end, because I, I'm, I'm not sure how many years we have left, but there will be a schedule that, that I know I gave.
Go.
Aren't we doubling that one? Aren't we doubling, or aren't we definitely doubling on these two?
We had budgeted for it. Uh, I want to explain when you, it's not like you can send extra payment on a personal loan. You can't just mail in an extra payment. You have to schedule it within two months in advance. That did not happen here. It got by us.
So we, we've been doing it for a good amount?
We did it one year.
Been one year?
We did one year. We did budget it for this year, but the phone call didn't get in in October for them to bill us for it. And I tried sending them payment two years ago, and they sent it back, so they couldn't do it. We have to call them and have them put it in the paperwork that they do. So that's on my calendar to do it next October, so I don't forget to do it.
And that's on the ninety-eight bond?
That's on the O E D D loan.
Which is gonna be gone next year.
Should be, I, I believe we can pay that off next year.
So what I'm, we're gonna do on that on, on the ninety-eight bond?
No, and on the sewer bond fund, again, that's the same thing. That comes out in December, and if you don't call them in October, you can't make an extra payment. So, it's important that you get on a, on a, take it on a file so that we can call and make those arrangements.
In the past, we've looked into doing that, though, and apparently have.
We did one time. One time I was able to call and get it.
And we did it for a year then? We did it for a full year then?
We did it one year. I called in and made it.
We're doing double payments for that full, for that full year?
What we did, we put an extra forty thousand dollars on the whole payment. You can't, you, you send it in once a year. We make one payment a year.
Oh, okay.
And you have to do that in October to get it to come out in December. Both payments are charged in December.
And the rationale for doing that was because of high interest rates?
Yes. We, we took the, the, if I remember what, uh, city administrator Seager did, is he took the one that was highest interest rate, started making more payments on it. Um, and that's how we got it down, 'cause I believe it was to go until two thousand fifteen. And, um, it should be paid off in two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
So, we were able to cut the rates off of that, which is from my recollection of what we did.
Is there a seasonal worker on the sewer department?
Um, the seasonal worker is the extra labor, and the seasonal worker usually, uh, is a summer worker. So, if he goes out and weeds out of the sewer plant, that's charged in extra labor for seasonal. And that is a line item, extra labor, that's part of what he does. So, if he does any work out there by the sewer treatment plant, that is charged to sewer. Any questions on sewer? Next you'll see is our sewer bond, um, fund. And you'll see that we have a beginning balance of eighty thousand. By the bond, uh, law that we have in our, on our books is we have to keep one payment ahead, or one payment in, in savings. And that is about eighty thousand. It was about eighty thousand, it's now not, but we like to keep that in. That's why I think that next year we can pay this off. Any questions on sewer bond fund? Next one is C A T V. We've had a lot of discussions on whether TV is making it or not. Basically, what pays this is the service fees from cable TV and HBO.
Now, one thing about this, about it not making it, from what I understand, that, uh, the reason it appears to make it right now, even if barely, is because all of the time spent by Tracy to maintain this isn't charged to this.
That's correct.
So, it's kind of a, it's kind of misleading to look at just these numbers and, and draw a conclusion. I think to get the best picture at some point would be to get some number from Tracy that if he was to charge for all of his time, how much more would be charged than what's shown here?
'Cause right now, in, in, um, just, just as an example, wages for TV is sixty-five hundred dollars. I, I know that is not enough for what they do for TV repairs. And even if you're to look at broadband, they budget seven thousand dollars. They can spend three days on trying to repair broadband service because of how much time they have to trace it down. So, uh, and Tracy has said this many times, that budget, uh, that if he was to si- to charge for every time that they go out and fix that, this would not be enough. Because it, it can take them literally three days to try and figure out a broadband. Let alone the times that they're in here trying to figure out whether modem is working, or if it's got a good signal, or whatever. So, it's, I think, Councilmember Lewis is correct, I don't think it is a true cost of what I D and his group perform, when he serves.
On, on your, uh, front page, you have, um, I guess they're both revenues. One you call, I'm, I'm having a tough time figuring out which is which, but you have your cable TV service fees. And then down below, you have telecom sales.
Telecom sales is broadband.
Okay, so that's the internet side.
Yeah, that's the internet revenue.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Nobody's asking how many customers we have?
How many customers?
Two hundred, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-nine.
You have two hundred and twenty-six C A T V, um, customers, and you have fifty-two HBO customers.
Two hundred, uh, fifty HBO?
Fifty-two HBO and two hundred and twenty-seven.
And again, from what I understand from Tracy, uh, HBO raised their charges by two dollars that we were unable to raise our fees, so HBO's being subsidized.
That is correct. We, we, the customer, when they sign up for HBO, pays nine seventy-five a month. The last time I looked at HBO was over eleven dollars a month, uh, for us to, that we had to pay our programming costs, so.
But it just got raised again.
But I believe it just got raised again. I haven't looked at our, our programming costs.
Is that annual fee?
Per, per month.
That's a, that's a Tracy.
So, it's a per, it's a per customer fee.
Oh, per customer.
So, so every time we tran- retransmit HBO to a home, our business, or whatever, that's, it's a fee that we pay to HBO.
But I don't know if HBO raised last year, they raised the year before in two thousand nine. I don't think they raised in two thousand ten, but I believe they just raised. So, your question was, do they raise it annually?
Yes.
That's, it's hard to say. It's whatever, uh, we're not there mercy.
And, and the last time we asked, uh, Tracy said, "All the stations raise their fees." And that, and they're all doing that, because, well, so things are going on in the marketplace in cable TV that's cause, that's causing channels, sta- you know, to, to charge for, to increase their fees to providers like us, like, for, like, podcasts.
I, I, I assume in some of our later meetings, or maybe our, you know, uh, planning session or something, we can have discussions of whether we should even be in the business or not, uh, providing city TV.
I, I think that's one of the questions that's gonna come to you.
Because, I mean, I mean, I'm on city, you know, I don't mind it. But it's not like there isn't alternatives out there. It's almost like the city's competing with private ind- industry. You know, which I don't think is.
That depends on how you define the word competition.
You know.
Competing.
Well, we got, we got a good deal going, you know, but.
Yeah, and it's a, it is a discussion we've had, um, during my time on, on council, that should we be in business?
Was there any conclusions?
Um, well, again, I'm not sure what you mean by conclusion, but the decision at budget was to move forward, um, offering a service, because we do offer a cable TV, TV product, and internet product is, that is, um, less expensive than all the others on the marketplace. Uh, and, and there's a niche for certain, a certain type of customer that doesn't necessarily want the hundred channels, that's comfortable with the thirty. That doesn't necessarily want the wide bandwidth and internet, that's comfortable with the, the slow broad, broad, broadband for a slightly smaller fee. And because that, we have that niche of customers, to take that away from them, when they might not be able to afford a larger, um, a larger monthly fee, um, we decided to continue offering it.
Just to respond, but part of the reason that we don't charge more so they can afford it is 'cause we're not charging the actual cost.
That's correct.
Which I, I don't think is right, myself, but.
If it's right or wrong, it's certainly not sustainable.
Yeah, okay, so at some point, we can rehash that.
Where the money subsidizing this coming from? So, we're subsidizing a cable broadband. Where are those tax dollars being pulled from to subsidize us providing a service at a non-competitive rate that, if, 'cause we're competing with another entity out there, another business, and so these tax dollars are subsidizing this service, so it's creating a unfair marketplace where this, are those coming out of the general fund subsidizing it?
No, um, Tracy is subsidizing it for not charging his actual labor, so, so.
Out of, so it's out of, indirectly, it's out of electrical?
His crew is not charging what they would normally charge to repair the lines.
But the rate increase from HBO that we, we can't charge for, where does that, money's come from?
It's coming from this fund by Tracy not charging, I mean.
It's balancing because he's not.
That's correct. It's balancing because he's not charging the correct, all the labor that he puts into it. So, I mean, it's, it's being subsidized by, uh, about the electrical, uh, backs.
I, I think the public needs a alternative, you know, I think some, some alt- alternative, or alternative, I don't know what it would be, so.
And when we looked at it before, uh, knowing that it wasn't sustainable, um, the comments were made that, okay, let's sell it to somebody that, that could operate it, and that apparently there wasn't any interest in taking it over.
A pretty small.
Something worth, you know, looking at, you know, as far as how do you get rid of it? Do you transition it, or you just turn the switch off?
Well, and, and the other comment that was made, though, is that we have the possibility, it's actually on one of our priorities, to bring a fiber optic line, um, a backbone, uh, through town that would, um, would certainly affect our competitive advantage, uh, and our ability to offer a different type of service for our, the term that's being used here is telecom, our, our internet, as an internet service, our internet customers. We could offer, um, a different type of service than we offer now. Uh, and that, that's all, because that's, that's been out there for the last couple of years, um, it was also one of those things, well, let's see what's, what happens with that. Now, hopefully, our priority of, of investigating that and, and making that happen will, will come to fruition, but then, the first time. The last, the last time we had this discussion did not result in bringing a fiber optic line. That, that changes the type of internet service we're providing, so, yeah.
A couple of things regarding that, but number one, the telecom can be s- supported separate from C A T V. So, there's really two decisions there.
Yeah.
Making one doesn't prevent the other. But even if, uh, the fiber optic was to happen, that's gonna cost some money. That we, to do it right, we would be faced with the necessity of presenting rate increases to cover that additional expense that people would vote on that may or may not, you know, get passed. So, you know, and, and my whole thing is that, I, I understand we're trying to be nice and cover a niche, but I don't know that's the responsibility of city government. There's other providers out there for, in most cases, whatever anybody wants, so.
So, there's providers now, but I think when the city got into the business, we did it for economic development, 'cause nobody was gonna do it for us.
Right, and it was self-sustaining financially then. But now, you've got other competitors that can give more for less, so, anyway.
How many are on broadband?
Fifty-two.
Fifty, you said.
Well, if it's HBO, that, I just don't get, I got electric, water, sewer, broad, HBO and C A T V, I didn't cover that.
There was one I missed. Thought I covered them all.
It's, it's, you know, when we, when we've asked for this before, it's been, it's always been a, at least slightly bigger number than cable TV. There's a, there's been a discount associated with your, if you get both services.
You get TV and broadband, you have a discount.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a ten dollar amount, something like that. Um, so there's an incentive to get both services.
So, that number's probably above two twenty-six then?
Uh, or above two seventy-eight. Two seventy-eight is the number for, for cable TV customers.
Twenty-two six is C A T V.
Two twenty-six, but, uh, the two twenty-six.
But you said fifty-two. What's, fifty-two of those, or in addition to those?
Fifty-two have HBO of those two hundred percent.
Okay.
Mayor, it's a point Gail kinda touched upon it, but we set a priority for fiber optics, and that's the nice thing to look at and have that backbone come in. Gail somewhat touched on it a little bit when he said the new fees, but if we're creating a new fee, we're, are, we're handcuffed, because we can't create new fees and charges without our voting people. That's a huge thing to think about, 'cause if we're trying to do infrastructure buildup, we buy this new service, we have to go before the voters, is the way I'm reading it, to provide this new, or to provide this new service, 'cause it's gonna be a new fee. And that, it's an up and down vote, and so, how do you, how do you communicate that message as city government? We need to have this fee for this fiber optics, and yet, people say, "Well, I don't wanna pay any fee." Okay, then we're defeated, all the stuff we're trying to do when it comes to economic development.
Yeah, and I, I don't necessarily look at it as hand, for myself, I don't necessarily look at it as handcuffs, other than, um, you know, if we say, "Look, the, the option is end an unsustainable service, or establish a new fee that allows us to create a sustainable service." That's an up or down vote.
Yeah.
If voters don't wanna support a sustainable service, then, you know, it has to be communicated by not supporting a sustainable service, we're gonna eliminate the su- the service that the city offers. And that, I mean, the other thing is that there's a ripple effect. If you eliminate a service, because if you look through these pages, there's, 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 it also affects the administrat- administration department. Right, because the, what, what Mary Ann refers to as upstairs here also answers phone calls about, um, cable TV and internet, bills for cable TV and internet, administers cable TV and internet. So, you're, you're, um, reducing the amount of revenue that, that comes into the administration department as well by eliminating the service. So, so all of that has to be communicated, but ultimately, it's an up or down vote. If, if voters decide not to, you know, not to continue with an, um, a sustainable service, they have to, you know, we have to communicate. City has to communicate the, the consequences of that, that vote. The other, the other part of the communication, though, is that this is not a, a new fee that everyone has to pay. You get to choose to pay that new fee if you want that service. So, if you want, if you wanna buy internet from the city, or cable TV from the city, you choose to pay that fee. But it's not like just because we voted yes for it, everyone has to pay it. It's only people that want that service have to pay for it. And I think, so that's, I mean, there's a lot of different ramifications of, of what you're talking about there. But hopefully, we can, um, you know, we can get the key to those handcuffs and, and, you know, just, you know, communicate everything about, about that decision.
This follow, as I understand it, I mean, I had it right either on fiber optics, it's not that we're putting in fiber optics, we're kind of allowing the fiber optics to come through town, and then we charge from the goal, our goals are over our, our thing to come in here, but then they're selling us, then they're, they're, they're letting our customers to go on their fiber optics, not, uh, or, or we're gonna have it as being our fiber.
I, the, the, I don't think there's been a proposal from a company to, to put in a line and sell to customers. The proposal is that the city pays for a line to come through town, that then existing broadband lines can, that go to, to, you know, res- you know, residences and businesses can tap into. It's just a different line through which we would be transmitting the service.
Yeah, if I mistake this, correct me, but as I understand it, if you were to eliminate both CATV and telecom, there would be about a forty thousand dollar hit to the general fund for administrative time for the existing staff to spend time on other stuff, but there would be some financial impact to the general fund. The other caveat to CATV is there, there's some kind of throttling point of up to two hundred and fifty customers. And if you go over that two fifty to two fifty-one, there's surcharges that kick in that would also increase expenses.
Or our, our dish service goes up drastically.
So, I, I just think sometime it'd be good to have a full absorption cost analysis of real costs done, so we know the real picture and potential for expenses, so we can take a look at long-term implications.
What would it take to get that, that kind of cost analysis? Is that something you could do, Mary Ann?
With, with the help of Tracy, yeah. I mean, I, I can do the cost analysis of what the TV channels cost us. But Tracy also has another section that, that he has, because he's familiar with what, what our transmission fees from channel two, six, eight, ten, what they cost us, so.
And what they would cost us.
And what they would cost us.
If we went over two fifty.
And, and I do know that our dish service would definitely go up well over a thousand dollars, paying about five hundred now, well, well over a thousand dollars a month. So, I mean, it, it can be done, it would take some time, but yes, I think it needs to be done in order to give you, the council, the proper insight of what it is going to cost us, should we continue this route. So I, I think it is a necessary step that we need to take.
Is it something that can be done in the next three months?
We could trigger the world. I, I put a list down here, I'm, I'm going to give Paul a list of what we've been asked for. So yes, I did put cost analysis of CATV and broadband, I think that's, I think both of those have to be analyzed as to what the cost is, because we have to know what Tracy's crew puts into fixing the system and what the actual cost is.
For, for both CATV and telecom.
Both CATV and broadband, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the reason I ask is because if, if we were able to get that cost analysis in March, I think we'd, we'd have the information to be able to take a fee increase to the voters and help the voters make that decision. If, if we don't, if we, if we wait till July, I'm not sure we have the time to get that in at the next general election, so. Is that something that the council would like to have within the next three months, yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, okay, good, thanks.
Anna, I'd be willing to help with that.
Okay. Any other questions on TV or broadband? Okay, go on, move to our next one, which is the OIB forum, which is the sewer, and I'm anticipating it's a sewer. Then we have the OIB, OIB Fire Hall, that's for Oregon Investment Board. It's the loan we picked out for the fire, for the new fire station. Currently that is being paid for out of the general fund. It's a monthly payment that we send to Oregon Department of Work.
Excuse me, what, what's the additional loan payment entry? Can you talk about that?
That is the additional loan payment that is budgeted for that I've indicated that has to be called in too much prior to the payment.
Okay, so that's not going to happen?
Not this year.
Okay.
But I do have it on the clipboard for next year to prepare.
And so, would we be using the same forty thousand, or? I mean, you wouldn't need new revenue next year?
No, 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 because that, that additional loan payment is being transferred out of the sewer fund. So that, that would not need additional initial.
Okay, we just carry that forty thousand over?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a way to make that, rather than wait until next October, just make the request now?
I, I could, I, I believe I could. I've never asked for that so far in advance, but that is possible. I should check into that.
You're saying spend it out of this year's budget?
No, it's, it sounds like we can't do that, because we didn't give them, we didn't give them the notice for this year. But I'm, since we didn't give them the notice for this year, I'm thinking, why, let's just give them the notice for next year right now.
Okay.
So that when they send the bill next December, it's going to reflect the additional payment.
I can do that.
Well, that's what Mary Ann's going to.
I'm going to see how, I know they need two months in advance. Will they take my notification now? I'm working in paperwork, so that come December, it's already done, in other words. But that would, that would have to be a guarantee that, you know, because I have to tell them how much I'm paying. I can't just say we're going to make an additional loan payment. I have to say I want to put twenty thousand dollars additional to the principal, and then they figure it out in the paperwork.
So probably, probably has to wait until.
So I'm wondering if I have to wait till the budget is approved, then I could call them in July and say, this is what we want to do for our upcoming payment in December, so that I would have the, the correct amount.
Yeah, and you'd also have to wait, if you're going to commit, until the actual revenues have been received.
Okay, any questions on the OIB fire station loan? Okay, the, the next one is the city light revenues, both for in-city and South Bank. And South Bank is from Cassidelocks towards Brightwood, to Brightwood. It's from the city on Cassidelocks to Brightwood. Now, I won't go into detail of this account, unless you have questions.
I, I. Well, no, I, I'd just like to make a statement. The South Bank was split out from the city years ago, in the nineties, I think, back when I was on council, because everybody paid the same rate. But like, you know, seventy percent of the city labor was spent out in that area doing trimming to keep those lines open, and it was kind of thought that the city was subsidizing, you know, the, the expenses associated with maintaining the lines out of town. So we separated it and created the South Bank, so it had its own rates, which are usually higher than the city, to account for those direct expenses associated with maintaining the lines out there. Anyway, FYI.
That's correct. And no more questions on city light, the last fund is the Captain's Board. This is a reserve fund that departments put part of their reserves into for expenditures like new vehicles, and computers, whatever they feel is going to come up down the road. Maybe not next year, but maybe ten years down the road, to try and save for things that we think is going to happen. This is also where the revenue would go, should the fire, old fire stations sell, the old fire trucks sell, and modern buildings sell. This revenue would be put in, to this department, because the electric department loaned four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help pay for the fire station. So any revenue generated from the old fire station would go back to the debt. Okay.
So, so on that last point though, you're paying that loan back.
Yes.
So, you wouldn't automatically put, if, if we paid that loan back, or, you know, you wouldn't just automatically, whatever we get automatically goes in, because you might overpay.
Correct, we would only pay up to the four hundred and fifty thousand, yeah.
Up to the, yeah.
I hope we have that problem.
I hope we have that problem. Okay, that, that is the, the review of the financials. The other thing with the financials that I'd just like to point out is on the front page, you receive a single sheet that says combined cash investment. This is the.
Okay, let, let us find it.
Okay, cash, just a single sheet that was on top of it.
Okay, got you, thank you.
This is the cash that the city has, both in the government pool and in our bank account. You see that on the top, top section of this, it says cash in the bank. You have the cash and petty cash, these are the banks that we have out to operate. And then, of course, you'll see the government pool. The total combined cash for the city is two point three. You'll see that down in the next session, section, the allocation of those funds. This shows what each fund has out of that combined cash, and it all equals out in balance.
Except there's one negative, right?
There is one negative, you'll see that there's a negative twenty-four thousand in the emergency services fund.
And from what I understand, what you told me, since that has a negative balance, but there is, has been money spent, or expenses incurred, since this has a negative balance, there's no revenue out of ambulance to pay for it, so that comes out of the general fund cash.
Comes out of the bank account, yes.
Yeah.
The other funds are subsidizing, if you want to say subsidized, subsidizing the MS fund by utilizing, it's not coming out of quote a certain fund, it's coming out of our bank account.
Okay.
Which is a combination of all funds, so please don't be sure that somebody's paying for this. We are all paying for it, the whole city is paying it, not just one fund.
Is that deficit, because billing's still out there, and there's still bills to, that you have to pay, or contracts not being paid, or?
No, there's still, there's still billings out there that we still get dribbling, I mean, two, three thousand dollars a month from Springfield that's coming in. But the most that we got in was just last month, which, when November was sixty-one thousand. I believe I put sixty-one thousand into the MS from property tax. That's why you went from a ninety-seven to a twenty-four in one month, is because of property tax. And you will see some more increases in the property tax, but only to, to the seventy-nine thousand dollar revenue, so. But we need to get more ambulance revenues coming in and build out.
So part of this fund deficit then is because some people pay quarterly on their property taxes, okay?
Yes, and not everybody pays on November, they split it into three, three things, so. I usually get a payment once a month from the prop, from whatever account.
But, but maybe this is the time to, to kind of point this out as an example, that the, of how a budget is not a precise document. When this budget was created, it included revenues being generated by the ambulance service.
That is correct.
Those revenues have not been coming in, and this is what you had that, but be, because there's, there's, there's no way to, to generate those revenues now. You have to adjust, you have to look at, you have to look at your budget and figure out a way to adjust, which is, you know, Paul's been telling us, he's in the process of doing it, but there's, there's a plan, but something happened with that plan. We don't, we, we took away our ability to generate revenue, now we have to, we have to make adjustments.
But so.
Yeah.
So the revenues you may be receiving, if I remember looking at an old aging report from ambulance billing, it really took like ninety days or so from a call to send the bills out for the insurance, da, 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 for us to receive money. So a lot of the receipts you've been getting have been based upon calls that were done, you know, three, four, five months ago. And in the last few months, there's been no real ambulance calls. So the money is going to go to zero or close to zero.
I believe the last, when I balanced, the November, the accounts receivable for ambulance was still in the neighborhood of fifty-four thousand dollars that we have out there waiting for revenues to come in. Now, I did send, honestly, I can't remember what month, several packets to Springfield for ambulance billing, that's why it got back up to, to the sixty-four, seventy-four thousand dollars. And I do have two billings that I have to send out to Springfield, but most of that is from the previous six months that we're waiting for.
But so, so that's just, that's just the nature of medical bills.
Nature of these.
I mean, it's, you know, the, the soonest you probably expected is the ninety days that you referenced, but earlier this year, we, we, we got a bill payment, I think it was close to ten thousand dollars from two, three years ago, that had just been kind of, the insurance companies had been doing their thing, or, you know, stalling, or they probably called it due diligence, and ultimately, we finally got it, so there's, you know, there's hope that that, that some of that could be, could continue coming in, but you're right, we haven't been answering medical calls for about six months now. But that recently started back up again, but there was a, a time period where you can't expect anything, ready?
So maybe a, a simple question or to point out is, the negative twenty-four thousand, had we had, or if we get the Multnomah County contract of twenty, and that's reflected in here, that would be twenty thousand dollars less.
Yes, I, I don't believe you're going to get the twenty, and I, I'll tell you why, it's because, number one, we didn't, we didn't respond from July to December, so I don't think you're going to get ten thousand of that. You might get the other ten, and I look at this as two separate months, two separate quarters or halves, because they requested us to bill them ten thousand each half, so in my mind, you might get the ten thousand from January through June, if we are up and responding, but I doubt if you're going to get the twenty. Now, that's just my personal observation by how they're asking us to bill them.
I think it's good to be realistic about it.
So I really don't think you're going to get twenty?
I have seen the truck down there, and I'm trying to think when it was that I saw it, but it was.
Well, we have been responding since Thanksgiving weekend.
But the key is.
Into Multnomah County.
The key is to get Multnomah, Multnomah County comfortable with how we were responding, and are we responding a hundred percent?
Right.
And July through December, I don't think they were comfortable and we weren't responding, so. That's just my interpretation of how they want us to bill, so realistic, possibly ten, and I doubt it. Just trying to set your mind that you may be ten.
But you also said there's fifty-two thousand dollars outstanding.
We have accounts receivable, and I'm, I'm thinking it was fifty-four thousand.
That's not reflected in the budget at all, that's just.
That is reflected, when I bring it in, you're correct, that is not reflected, I've got to think how I, how I document that. I should probably sit down with you and show you where that comes in, because there's a certain amount of write-off that I have to do, it's thirty-four ten.
We talked about it, just clarify.
It's thirty-two percent that I have to write off from the initial, from the initial bills that they send out. So, yes, we get revenue in periodically, but I think you're only going to see about sixty percent of that there, out of that fifty-four, if I, if I'm thinking my numbers right.
So if we did receive that, sixty percent of fifty-four. So if we did receive that, sixty percent of fifty four, it wouldn't be a negative balance anyway.
Providing you have no more expenses throughout the year.
Yeah.
And I, I just don't think that's gonna happen.
Well, no, there's expenses, yeah.
There's expenses there that are continuing that we don't have revenue coming in, so I think you'll find that this will grow. Will start to grow back up again.
All right, what, can you, I'm in council, but there shouldn't be a lot of expenses, right?
Yeah, fuel, yes, when you say a lot, I think you're gonna see roughly, and I'm just estimating five thousand a month.
Okay, okay.
Testament.
That's fine.
Because you have phone, fuel, um, repairs, should they need something repaired on the engines or whatever. Um, I think you'll see that, but will you see twenty three thousand a month? I don't know.
Is Devon's twenty five hundred a month coming out here?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, the next item on um the list that Paul has worked out for me is identification of red flags. Um, I went through the, through the financials with Paul, I've discussed a few concerns, um, there's nothing quote major, I think at the six month review, uh, when Paul and I sit down and perhaps with counsel when I get through my reports here. I think there might be some, some things we need to look at, but right now I think everybody's trying to wash their pennies, um, and I think we're, we're doing okay. But again, I think the six month review is, is where we need to really look at where departments are having some issues and where we need to cut. And I'll get to that when I get to my reports. Um, right now he has update on current year's budget. Um, is there anything council has on the current year's budget other than EMS budget? Because we know the emergency services budget needs to be pretty much redone as far as their priorities and where, um, they need revenues expenditures, but any questions on the budget?
Yeah, I, I don't know if you can answer these or not, but just as a general question. I, I know you're looking at the numbers and when we say we're okay, that means that, you know, the revenues are equal to or exceeding expenses. But I don't know if in the, if you were to ask the department managers if they're having to uh delay projects in order to meet that or not, or, you know.
I can't answer.
I, I know, I know you can't answer that.
I can answer for the other departments, I can answer for mine.
Right.
For the department.
Okay.
Um, that yes, I'm delaying some computer work, because I don't wanna use all my computer budget in the first six months of the year and find out, I've got a catastrophe waiting three months later, so, yeah, I am like putting things off, um, on the computers because I have so much money and I gotta, I gotta watch it, so as far as our office up here, yeah, there is a project that I'm holding off on, but.
Now, one of those things you're putting, are putting off is not fixing your email problem, right?
Um, I'm up and running again, but yes, our email problem with the server, um, is still an issue, but again, I, I'm, I gotta hold off until I know that I'm not gonna have a server go down in three days. I, I, I mean, I just, I just don't think I have funds to do that right now.
Well, I, I don't wanna beat.
And I've, I've talked to Gail about this.
I, I don't wanna beat this to death, but there was a, a situation in the environment here where she was getting caught with viruses that could not be resolved with just virus protection. And therefore her mail was down a lot. And in talking with, I brought a guy in to just validate and they're doing all the right things. But it was thought that there is something uh on the server that's contaminating maybe your, yours and Tracy's PC. And it's be, it may be, the only way to avoid it is to change from using Outlook to another mail client. Okay, to avoid that virus, and that was part of an agreement that you guys have talked about doing, is that part of what's being held up?
We have, I've, I've agreed to try and do that right now, I'm, quote the guinea pig, I'm using that client right now on my computer.
Okay, so, okay, so that's in progress.
So, so that I can see how it's gonna interact with the other employees and whether that's gonna be beneficial for us. And so I've used it, what I think, three weeks now.
Okay.
So, yes, that is in the works and I've been uh communicating with Dave, our IT guy, on how many viruses we're finding on our server. Uh, we're running it every day and, you know, it's, it's a constant battle, and I think, I think he agrees, I think, um, I agree, we need to change the environment on our computer and go to a different, um.
If you go to Unix, yeah.
Well, yeah, but I'm running Thunderbird right now.
Okay.
Which is okay, so it's different, but, yeah.
And, and the only reason I bring that up, because, you know, as a customer and we publicize, you know, your guys' email addresses and people try to communicate by email and then, I mean, I found out myself, I, I kinda wait till three o'clock in the afternoon and I don't get a response. And I call and I find out that our email's down, so it's, it's just not a convenience, it's, I think it's a business necessity because it's used for critical business communication, not only within the city, but probably outside the city, so. If, if we begin, I, I just think that's something, you know, you should work with Paul and bring to council, if that starts to be delayed too much.
Okay.
We, we should have, give us the opportunity to see what we can do.
Yeah. And you can't send us an email to tell us.
I can now, my computer's been up about three weeks.
Stick to your.
Okay, so.
Okay.
So is there any, um, discussions on the budget that I could answer, I can't answer the project issues with, with the other departments, but, um. I think that once you, we go through the reports, I think maybe we'll have a better feel for what I can produce for you so that you will keep in tune with what the budget is like and where we're at.
Let's go through the reports.
Okay, that's our next slide, is the reports. Um, I gave you three reports, you'll see I stapled them together, this report. See, one of them is revenue less expense report. The other one is a quarterly report.
What is it, can we read the font, I was a little quick.
I'll give you one, uh, maybe one, I'm sorry, I'm giving one to you. And then finally, a graph that I did, um, for revenue expenditures. I'd like to touch base on the quarterly report first. It looks like this. This is a report that, um, Councilmember Louis had, had asked that I, I try and, and do, and I am for this report, I talked to Paul about it, he wasn't. He wa, he liked it, but he didn't know if, if it would do what we needed it to do, and I pointed out to him that, that I think this report will help the department heads figure out where they're at and will. And I don't wanna use this word, but I don't really have a word, um, force them to look at their budget and see where they're at. By, by giving me a forecast, they're actually having to sit down and look at their financial and tell me what they project. And I think that's very important as we, um, we go forward in figuring out whether, where we're at, especially these hard times that we're running into. So I've, I've created this report, is there, it, it has some work that I have to do on it because I didn't get that a few of the, uh, nice, nice looking report quality that I prefer to do. But this report is, is I've created it and it can be done every quarter, it can be done on a month basis. All I have to do is type in one date and it populates it, so it's not, the most time consuming was to set it up, but now it's almost done, so it's just a matter of me getting the data from the department heads when they get their, their report on how they're forecasting the next six months. This is on a quarterly basis, so the next one that I'd like to try and do is in January, I wanna give them December financials and say, forecast what's the next six months gonna look like for us. And that's the forecast they would give me, I would input that forecast and it would be given to you. We'll look and see what we are actually doing. What this gives you is what the approved budget is, what remaining balance of our budget and what percentage is remaining that can be used. And if you look at, and I'm gonna go back real quick on this one, you'll notice that on the bottom of this page it says forty two, forty two percent of the fiscal year has elapsed as of November. So in my mind, when you look at percentages, if they've used sixty percent of their budget in November, then they've got a problem. They need to back off a little bit on their budget, because they've overspent what the percentage of our twelve months are supposed to be. So that's what this report, I think, is good for. It, it really gives you a quarterly report on how we're doing. Um, the next report is.
Just a second.
Sure.
I'd like to elaborate on that a little bit. Uh, you know, the whole intent of this was, as Lance has said and we all, you know, mentioned, is that the budget's a plan. But once it's approved, then departments, you know, make periodic decisions based upon that plan and things can change. There can be changes that affect revenue, there can be changes that affect expense. So the whole idea was to put up periodic checkpoints, i.e. quarterly, to where the department heads would go back and, and check that their uh revenues are on track and then what they assumed that was going to occur during the year is still going to occur. And that expenses uh are being metered in such a way that they don't expect, uh, exceed revenue. And if there's anything new that they can uh present that at a high level, this is not at a line item.
Right.
It's by category, so the intent was just three month checkpoints to reforecast your revenue at a summary level and reforecast your expenses to get to a bottom line, so we el- eliminate the uh fourth quarter surprises.
Right.
So, I, just a second, Jeff, uh, okay, but I just wanted to, um, apologize for steering us back into the emergency services fund, but we just went through, um, the, um, that document called combined cash investment and we discussed the negative balance of the emergency services fund, which is our actual negative balance. And then I'm looking at our quarterly report and it seems like it should show up, that there's a problem there.
Is there?
In the, in the quarterly, and so if there, but it doesn't, it shows that we've got, um, or we've got fifty three percent of our revenues, but we've got, you know, well over that forty two percent that you, of, of time elapsed, so. As we're, as we're reading these and other, you know, we, we recognize we've got an issue there that has to be addressed. How does this report communicate that issue?
Number one, I don't want you to quarterly these numbers for this, okay, because I have not verified these numbers.
Okay.
Okay. What, what this represents here is your cash, what this represents is your revenue expenditures. This is what you have in cash, they're two, two separate things. This is what your revenue expenses, this is what you have in the bank. And I, I know that it's hard to quarterly those two, it took me a while, but, and it still takes me a while, um. In order to bring this back up to, to a positive, you want, either have to bring in more revenue or stop spending money. And, and let the revenue, let the accounts receivable both come in and stop spending money, so. It's not gonna show you that you're in the hole twenty four thousand dollars in cash, if this isn't cash, this isn't your cash report. This is your cash report. So I don't know if Gail can, can elaborate on that, um, as a banker, you know.
Kind of like, it's kinda like your checkbook.
This is your checkbook, this is your budget, and your, your, um, your revenue expenditures that you brought in, but this is your checkbook.
So it's, in terms of using this as a tool for a department head, you're not giving them their checkbook information.
They are, they're getting this every month.
They're getting that every month.
Every month.
So, so you're using a quarterly report to report how the budget's doing, you're using the monthly report to report how the checkbook's doing.
Yeah, they get this every month, shows them how much cash they have.
Well, and.
So you use the two reports in conjunction, Jeff?
To kind of talk with Gail, said I like this idea because this is, I think, an accountability tool, when you said you didn't like the word forces them, but this is where we hold department heads accountable, where the public tax dollars are held to the, the standard where the department heads have to be within their budget process and they know what they're spending, it, it forces them to look at stuff and I think it's a good idea to have this accountability piece for that transparency issue, because they know what they have and what they don't. Instead of just going, oh, I'll figure, figure the receipts later, what's coming in, this is, this makes them do that.
This makes them see where, where they've either overspent in material and services or, or how they have done, how they wash their budget through, uh, what they plan.
Eva?
No, actually, I'm, I'm good to go.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, and I think to your thing that this quarterly report doesn't reflect, you know, some of the other numbers. What's missing in the quarterly report is a revised forecast. And again, this is using, you know, the planned numbers at this point, but if I was the emergency services department manager, you know, I, I now know we're not gonna get those revenues, so I would be putting in the forecast a lower number which would change some of these figures, and I would then be forced to also lower my expenses to keep it balanced. If I didn't, then you would see, based upon, if I forecast a lower revenue and a, and uh exceeding expenses, you are gonna see the negative in this report.
So, basically without the forecast from department heads, this would not show the actual, what we feel would come out. So that's why it's important for the department heads to forecast what their next three to six months is gonna be.
Randy? I, um, I guess, Mary, a question for you, but I'm having a tough time with these revenues on the EMS knowing that you're only gonna collect sixty percent of them. Um, and I guess there's no other way around it, because you also show the expense of the write-off as an expense. And then you get to the cash, the cash balance and it's adjusted, it doesn't have that, um, adjustment in it.
Now, this is what you have cash.
I know, but it, it's almost like we're bumping it up by that uncollectible, we're bumping up the expense by the uncollectible. And, and it's almost like it's, I, so I'm having a tough time. People might call it smoke and mirrors, but it's the reality of you bill it, you don't collect it.
But, uh, let me chime in here, maybe this'll help. From what I, if I understand correctly, you may have a hundred thousand dollars in accounts receivable, but you only budget a percent of that as expected revenues. So, the revenue is not equal to accounts payable.
As far as the, okay, as far as the budget goes, but as far as the forecast goes, it's already adjusted then? Is that what you're, so you're saying?
Well, there isn't, he, he, if, if he makes a forecast, it would be adjusted.
Okay.
And then these numbers would, would change. But even in the basic budget, right, in the original document.
Yes, in the original document, you can, you budget, you budget that the money you're gonna receive less the write-off.
Adjustment of the write-off, yeah.
So it should be realistic, expected revenues, not inflated.
Right.
Yeah. That'd be easier for me to understand, but I understand from a public accounting perspective, you probably have to, you probably have to.
Sometimes I don't, yeah.
You probably have to say what you're billing, not, not the reasonable expectation.
Right, just, just doing this report and having a forecast doesn't change the budget.
No.
Which is just, which is the plan that gets, gets passed by resolution.
Right.
Um, at the, at the beginning or end of the fiscal year for the following fiscal year, so you can't, you can't change it without going through a lengthy budget process, but you can update it as, as you recognize things have changed that would otherwise affect the plan. So it allows us that flexibility to work with our plan, but also be realistic.
Any more questions on the quarterly report? Any more questions on the quarterly report? The other report that the, um, the system actually does is called revenue less expenses. This was a, similar to what the, the previous councils have received. Basically, it takes revenue that you get, get in, minus your expenditures, gives you the current year-to-date, your current budget, and your unexpected balance. This is just one report that I gave out this week. Whether this is a report that you wanna see, it's really up to you. I can enhance this report in some respects, I can delete some things, however you- These reports are, are just samples of what I can do. If there's some other report that you'd rather see, uh, if you'd rather add something to these reports, I can see if I can do that. The other report I, I gave you was just a general fund of revenue and expenses to show you what our revenue comes in at every month, what our expenditures are every month. And this is basically for a whole year. Now, I only did one fund. It is true that there's about, I wanna say eight graphs, two, maybe seven, that usually is done, that has been done to previous councils. I didn't do all of them because I wanna make sure this is something that is useful to council before I put the time in to create these graphs. So I guess now it's up to you to tell me, or to give me ideas. What is it that you want to see every month for your financials? Or is it you want to see it every quarter? You know, I'm, I'm looking for suggestions on what you wanna see. And does the revenue less expenditures give you the knowledge that you need or want to move forward every month? Or is it this report you wanna see every month? Or is it just a cash report you wanna see every month? I'm trying to identify what you need from me for, for every month.
Are you, would you be comfortable with us answering that after a break? Okay.
Please.
Is everyone okay with taking a break now?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll take a ten, or a nine minute break, come back at five after.
Any thoughts of what you would like to see on a monthly basis? And would you like to see the quarterly report start to come out on a quarterly basis?
I'll go first. I, I do not need to see this chart. It's my opinion. I, I, I am anxious to see the real, after forecasting, quarterly report. I would like to pursue that. And then I'm kinda in the middle on the monthly. I, I guess I'll, I, I guess I, my opinion, we should continue this till we see what influenced the quarterly report has, but-
Continue what?
When you say monthly, what are you?
The, the-
Revenue less expenses.
Revenue less expenses. But I'm really more of a summary report guy.
I just wanted to make sure what he said.
Was, was that what you were asking?
You're talking about this one?
Yeah, right.
Now, we have two, we have two here. One's, one's the November statements, I'm gonna finish the year-to-date.
You have your November statement that I gave you, which is the forty-seven page.
Yeah, okay.
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 Then you have the one that I, I gave you as a sample, rev, it's called revenue less expense.
Right, that's, I'm sorry, that's the one I meant.
It's about a twenty-seven page report.
Okay, that's the one I got.
And I could probably cut it down a little bit more because I see some funds that don't need to be in there. Because they got zeros.
The revenue less expenses.
Right.
And the quarterly report are those two that I'm most interested in.
So it's the forty-seven page book that you're not interested in?
Correct.
Okay. And the graph, the eight pages of that.
Yes.
Yeah, Eva?
Okay, here goes bonehead finance for me. I am not as detailed, and so, but there's a thought that I had on this, um, on the graph, because I'm learning some stuff. Is that it would be nice to see like those things of like, you know, um, you're gonna see your revenue spike on a certain fund when like, say, um, property taxes come in, or some of those things coming up, right? And so then that helps, it, it's helpful for me, although I could get the reports to me singly, um, so that I can sit there and look at that. And I can see kind of when the revenues are coming in during the year and whatnot to help there. The quarterly, um, is really helpful because that's kind of checking your percentages and I get that totally going along with the combined cash investment report that you have. And then, um, this one, I think, well, we're getting close to budget, but I don't, uh, I would think of it as more like quarterly, but that's me, because you're really detailed, you really can dig through these on the, um, the revenues less expenses.
Oh.
I don't know that I would, that that would be as helpful for me.
And then how about, how about the revenue with comparison to budget, forty-seven page book?
The only, the only thing I can see that the revenue less expenditures give, giving you every month, you do have a snapshot of what, where we're at. If, if you had, if I don't give you anything, you know, and we just depend on the quarterlies, and I think you're, you're probably gonna be surprised. Where if you had the revenue less expenses on a month-to-date, you could look at it and say, oh, we might have a problem here or something. It would give you an idea of what's could, could be coming up in the near future. So I, I think you guys did something monthly, um, I'm just not sure what that is.
And we haven't, we also haven't talked about the, the combined cash investment? You didn't mention that, did you?
No.
And you haven't mentioned that either. That's what we referred to earlier as the, the checkbook.
No, I, I think that this is important that you have it every month.
I like it.
It's a monthly.
Okay, I will deal. I, I wouldn't, not, I want you to not have it, so I think this is important for you to have.
That was the cash investment?
That's, that's just one page thing that says that, hey, we balance to zero, all of our money is accounted for, and this is what your cash balances look like. This is an important document for you guys to see what you have cash.
Randy?
I guess I concur with what's been said. The revenue less expenses form, for me, and I would think the department has, if you had a prior year comparison, worked into that.
Oh, I could, I, I think I could do the prior year.
Prior, prior year, what?
Comparison on, on all these lines.
The prior year monthly, I believe, uh, would it be ready monthly?
Yeah, right.
So-
Prior year for November would be a column.
Mm-hmm.
So if there was-
Oh, well, okay.
Like on your labor expense, if we're- Spend a, a whole lot less, a whole lot more, it'd show up.
Okay, good.
So you are, if I, if I understand you, a prior year monthly, month-to-date? Is that, so it would be comparing this November to last November?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and really, you could have the current year-to-date actual compared to the current year-to-date prior year.
You might have it.
And Randy, did you, did you wanna talk about the quarterly report or the chart, or the combined cash investment?
The, no, I just, mostly I concur with what's been said so far, so I, I like the, the one sheet. The graph, I think I was the one that asked for pie chart kind of stuff, but it's like, yeah, it doesn't really tell me anything.
You-
But we've had them for the different funds in the past and-
Right, and that's what I was going on, I just didn't wanna create the first, uh, problem that this was not an option. You can create these charts. I did revenue expense, but you could do beginning balance, you can, you can do many different things with a chart. So I would need to know what you want to see on that chart.
I think, I think if I had the prior year comparison, because that's what I looked at before on those, was prior year comparisons and-
And that's what this is basically doing, prior year revenue, prior year expense, because it's showing you one year. So if I put it on the revenue less expense, that would give you what you need?
Yep. Burke?
Yeah, the, the quarterly report. Now, are they gonna include the forecasts, or is that, um?
They would include, when you get it quarterly, it would be, the department heads would have to give me the forecast that they're forecasting, and I put it in, in the matrix, and that would be the report you get, yeah?
Yeah, I like that. And then the monthly, the cash investment, that's, that's nice, that's helpful. And then the revenue of less expenses. And I don't know about the, the forty-seven page or the, you know, I think the, uh, revenue less expense gives me more information, I think.
Okay.
So, Tom or Jeff? No graph and less forty-seven page? Yeah, and those we're talking about here, less forty-seven, no graph, and everything's going upwards.
So, um, I find the, the chart to be helpful, um, like Eva. And, um, I think that the, the combined cash investment, like you said, is something important for us to have. And the, using the forecast with, or the quarterly report with forecasting, um, is something I'd like to see. So I kind of agree with what, what Eva said there, but I think what you have here is just a consensus that we want. A few of us spent one month, might want these charts, but the majority don't. So we, we'd be able to request that, correct, from, from you, if we wanted to see those?
If, yes, I can. Is it the revenue and expense part of the chart that you wanna see for, for the different funds? Because I have to create all these charts.
Yeah, I think so.
And once I create them, yes, they're there.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Um, but, but as far as just kind of the consensus of what we're, we're looking for here, the one-page combined cash investment, regular basis, that's a monthly. The revenue less expenses, including, does everyone agree to, that Randy's idea to include the prior year comparison?
Yes.
Okay? And then also a quarterly report including forecasts. So those, those are three that there's a consensus that we want. And two of them are monthly and monthly. Anyone disagree with that? So does that answer your question?
Because it does. Thank you.
Can I throw out another question, maybe kind of layer it on top here? Where do we see gross revenues, maybe gross expenses? Electrical department, the CATV?
Revenue less expenses.
So if we want, you'll be able to pull out reports, maybe, to look at like a five-year trending, is what I'm kind of asking?
We, we are, Paul and I have talked about, um, the trend and getting that in. We do have in our program a five-year analysis into our system.
Okay, that's one of the questions.
So we're, that's my next project, is to look at that and try to, to look five years down the road, to see where we're heading, what are, what we're looking at.
Okay.
We've not gone into that yet.
But you don't, with the new system, did you put five years of history in there?
We only put three.
Okay.
Three or four.
FYI.
Three.
So to start with, you'll pull out a three-year, and the next year, four-year.
I believe it's three. If I had, if I needed to do five, I'd have to, I can put in just the totals, you know, each individual, just the totals for each department. Again, if that's how we wanna go, it's the five years. If you wanna see what your five years you did before, and then what you're projecting for the next five.
I think eventually, I'm, you know, I'm only here a year, but eventually, I, the five-year thing would be there then. In a couple of years, you, the system would produce that.
I believe we put in three years of history. Okay, um, the next thing, I guess, yeah. And I show the next thing is the work order process, and, and basically what I wanna do is give you an update on the work order process. This has been in, as you well know, in our audit report for a number of years. And I had reported to you that we were going to get our software programmers out here in February. It seems that they are, there, there's two systems that our software company is on. And one of them is Classic, called Classic, and it's a very old system. And the other is Clarity. Clarity is our new program software. And they are in the process of converting that work order system into Clarity. And it goes out to a beta test site in February and will be available for us to train on in April. So I have, uh, basically postponed that training until April, till Clarity is up and running because I don't wanna train, and, and this is just the process they, they suggested, and I have to concur. I don't wanna train staff on the old system and then get a new system that's gonna be totally different. When they come out here, I want them to train on the new system. So I have postponed their training till about April, and so that's where the work order, uh, system is at. Basically, that's what I'm to report on, that that was a, a decision that, that I felt was beneficial to the city, is to wait.
Okay. But you said in April would be their beta?
No, February is a beta test.
Okay.
So they're-
We're not gonna get involved in beta, correct?
No, we're not testing beta, no, no.
Good.
They, they are projecting-
Been there, done that.
They're going out to their, they have their test site already for beta testing.
Okay.
And then by April, they will release, uh, the new software to us. And then they will come out and train our staff on the new Clarity system. So they're not being trained in two different systems.
Okay. Got a question. What, once you do the, can you explain the work order system? And how that, how that will hit the books, I guess?
Okay, the, the work order system is only one module of, of what is required for this work order system to work. You have your inventory, you have work orders, um, you have your assets, and there's one other module in it. But those three interact.
Is it labor?
No.
Time, there's not time accounting? How much?
Well, we have timekeeping already, but we are not using it at this stage.
Okay.
This is one of the modules they need to train us on. The timekeeping goes in and says, okay, if I work six hours on this job, you can code it to six hours to that job. The work order system is in conjunction with inventory, so it says, hey, I want two transformers for this work, for this job. It goes in and says, I'm gonna put two transformers into this job. So it takes it out of your inventory and puts it in the job, job accounting system, the cost accounting. So because the auditors wanna know what jobs the, the crews have been doing. You know, when South Bank was going on, they wanted to know what inventory went into South Bank, what the labor cost, what the truck cost, all of that. This, this system would do that for you. Whether that, whether when we get this all in, in, in line and, and going, is, is that gonna be beneficial for the city? Tracy has his ideas that we're not big enough, you know, we got, that's gonna be too, too much labor intense for people to do. I don't know, I've not seen the system. We purchased it many years ago, so Cassell was nice enough to include it in our, in our, they didn't charge us for it. So they're upgrading this, and, and that's part of our cost that they purchased it many years ago. So how is that gonna affect this? I can't be sure, I, I don't know. I think what it's gonna, gonna help is, is the auditor, I think it's gonna help Tracy when it comes down to June. Year-end, instead of, I would hope, instead of two to three weeks of counting all everything, it's right there. But it's only as good as what you input into it. So if he forgets to put a transformer on inventory and he puts it out the door, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna balance. So I can't answer that in good, on to Randy, as to how it's gonna affect all of this, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, you would still do, at least for Peter's time, still do a physical inventory to map that-
Yes, we would. We would not-
To the system.
Cut off, no, it's just like our-
That, that would tell you how much is not being used.
No, we would, we would have to run parallel systems for a while. Definitely. So, that's the best I can answer. Well, until we get trained up to see how it's gonna affect everything. What it will do is, there's a line called the encumbrance, it's actually a column. So, that, that comes in line with the purchase order system and that might be the one I was thinking of. That when you purchase a transformer or whatever, that PO is in the system, that transformer goes to assets. And it sits there until he takes it out of stock and puts it onto a job order. So, those four modules actually work together. So, then that tells you your encumbrances. So, if he's ordered a transformer and it's not, and he ordered it this month and it's not gonna be here until too much from now, the encumbrance will be there. So, to show that you have a $2,000 expense out there that you've gotta account for. That's another good thing that does, it tells us what you've got out there that you're buying.
Pending, yeah.
Pending, you call it encumbrance, pending, you know, pending sales. So, it, it all works together. And Mayor, that's, if there's no other questions, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, we had talked, did we talk about the proposed budget process?
Oh, thank you, I didn't, I scratched it after the, I didn't. I did give you, thank you. I did give you also a handout. It's a staff report that Paul had put together back during the November fourteen meeting, I just made a copy of it so you can see it. He also has a proposed budget development process on the next page, leading you through six steps of the process. And kind of explaining what each process should help us accomplish. And then as, when I get into the budget process, I give you a detailed timeline on where, when the first budget meeting is. Basically, when I have to publish and all the meetings to follow. The biggest thing is, is the final page, which is the budget format. And this, I think, is going to help council and citizens. When we do a, we do it based on a program. So, if one of your programs, and I'm gonna use pick on CATV, if the program is CATV, then you're gonna have, one, what your revenue is and all your expenses. And what services that's gonna cover. So, that's gonna cover all your programming costs, all your channel costs and all of that. And when it gets down to the bottom, if your revenue sources don't meet with all your expenditure, is that gonna say this program has a problem? And that's what we're not identifying in our budget in many of the different, emergency services. Again, you all know, you know, whether we wanna supply ambulance, do we just wanna do fire, do we wanna do both? That's what's gonna show, that's what's gonna come out of this program budget, which is all new to me too. So, I think this is gonna lay out those programs for you and show what we can afford to do and what we can't afford. And where we need price increases, where we don't.
So, when, so these program reports would be done prior to April?
Yes, what, what programs would have to be done, and I believe Paul is going to conduct two community meetings. The department heads are gonna get together and figure out what programs they're gonna do and figure out their costs. All of this is internal, because bottom line is, I have to put it in the way the original budget law tells me to do, which is by category. And so, I have to take these and kind of put them in a different matrix. So, yes, this is gonna be all done before our first budget meeting.
Could you ask Paul to, if you don't mind?
Sure.
I just think it'd be a good suggestion, maybe, to have a milestone with a date of when the program documents would be completed prior to April.
And I, I think, Gail, that's gonna go into what I'm gonna ask, is I'm gonna get this information out to department heads. And they're gonna have so much time to meet with Paul, myself, and get that back to us. So that we can put it into the system, the matrix that we need to sell. I think that, I think that's where it's gonna hit. And yes, I will ask him to put in a milestone for the program.
Okay, thank you.
And when you say milestone, are you referring to the second page here where the list of steps?
Yes.
The steps in the budget process?
Yeah.
Because at the last meeting, we added another step, which was the work session with the department heads and other budget committee members. And he added, it looks like he added that either as in addition to step two or as a new step, I can't remember which.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that's when these would be done, or they, these would be done after that, or.
Right.
It'd be nice if they were-
I'm thinking these would either come between step three and four is where I would think they would come in at. But I will check with Paul.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions on the program, a program budget, any concerns? It's gonna be new to department heads, it's new to staff and it's new to council and budget committees.
So, it's not your entire budget wrapped up in, onto those sheets either? It's, you're gonna, you'll have maybe twenty-five programs the city operates and then do a sheet for those? Or how in-depth are you getting? Like cemetery, could, I mean, is that, is cemetery the sheet?
Well, my understanding would be cemetery, for example. What does it cost for us to mow the cemetery, water the cemetery? Estimate what the cost is going to be for, say, five burials a year. I mean, that's where I see it going. But Paul and I have not gotten into that depth, because this is something new to me, I have to, we have to think, what, what pro, what is a program? Is it the cemetery, is that a program? Yeah, I think it is. Because otherwise, if we can't operate, if we don't have the money to operate the cemetery, then we need to do something with our, and I'm not, not suggesting this, but maybe, you know, if we can't operate the cemetery with what revenues we get and then our plots are too cheap or our open and closing fees are too cheap. I don't know that. I don't think anybody has sat down to say, what is it costing? And I think that's where Paul is trying to get, is what is it costing us to run the cemetery? What is it costing us to maintain this building? Nobody knows.
There's a, there's a lot of discussion that's gonna go into these. And I, you know, the emergency services, we have a committee that's doing it. Basically, they all, the recommendation that we accept would be one of these sheets that would be filled out to say, this is, this is what we're gonna look like. But I could see a lot of discussion almost on everything the city does. To answer the question like the building or, it's basically all we have is our budget. We're not coming up with anything new.
Maybe that would be another question for you to ask Paul, is which funds, if that's the right term, does he intend to produce one of these worksheets for? So, we know.
Otherwise, it'd be just taking the budget process and filling the form out and saying, this, you have the budget document, these are the ten items that we're accomplishing. It's a little bit more information, but if it's a real analysis.
And like I said, I, I've not talked to budget in depth, or talked to Paul in depth about what funds are we doing, what programs are we doing? Is it something we haven't discussed, so?
So, you'll ask him?
I've got it down there.
Thank you.
The way I look at that, though, is you'd have to do one of these for every fund. If this is the format that we're operating on, you couldn't leave a fund out and not do one of these for a fund. Because then you wouldn't have a budget process for that fund. Then you couldn't have a budget for that fund and, as Mary Ann said, then you couldn't operate a cemetery if it was a cemetery that you left out. Or you couldn't operate a museum if you left out the museum fund. So, I think you'd, at the minimum, you'd have to have one of these for every fund. But then you're also talking about different types of programs like this building.
I just use that as an example.
That's an example, that you might do something in addition to each fund, but, or some funds might get broken down into several of these sheets. Because maybe the administration provides more than one program. But I think at the, at the minimum, you've gotta have a process to approve a budget for each fund.
Well, but-
Yeah.
We're doing that today without these reports. We're, we're doing budgets today.
Correct.
Using the budget-
Using the budget.
System.
System.
Without preparing these program documents.
Right, if, but what I guess, the part that I'm saying is, though, if we choose to use this format, which I think is what's being proposed to us right now. If we choose to use this format, then we'd be going away from the, how budget committee has traditionally operated. And we'd be going to this format. And we'd have to have this format for each fund. At, at a minimum.
Okay.
Eva?
It seems like before, and I don't wanna speak for him exactly, but it seemed like when I talked with Paul that he had thought that the budget process needed to have, put in what we wanna provide for a service, like, you know, what we wanna provide with front office, for instance. And then, so say that you get rid of personnel in the front office, is what is your cause and effect? So, I thought that that's kind of what the two things here, you know, what the services are gonna be provided, setting the, what we're gonna provide. And then what the cause and effect would be and what we decide. Because we don't have that currently.
And I don't disagree with creating it. It's just my head getting around creating it for every fund rather than important funds or something, so it's fine.
So, you're suggesting more of a, like a hybrid model where you, you could do this for what you call important funds and then not, and then just go use the traditional process for the less important ones?
Yeah, I mean, some of these, you know.
Some of those would not-
I mean, like the museum, are you gonna do this for the museum?
I, I-
I'm just saying, and, and I don't know.
Jeff?
I think for simplicity's sakes, when you have a standard process, you know, this is what we wanna go to, this is what we should do. There's this cost effect, because if you look at budgetary processes or when committees have been formed, sometimes there's vision that says, hey, if we cut this, this is the effects that are gonna happen. Or if we just arbitrarily cut, and then all of a sudden, you end up somewhere where you don't know what those cause and effects were. This, this forces everybody, that discussion to have, what are we gonna have for services or not have for services? And even though it's kind of ambiguous, ambiguous, there we go, for the cemetery to have one of these, but we still, still need to have it, because for consistency's sakes. In case somebody says, well, you did it for this fund but not that fund, just be done with it, everybody, every fund has one. Instead of just have the hybrid, I think, is what we're talking about.
And I think the idea, as Eva was saying, is as part of our budget process, we say, these are the services we're providing. This is how we pay for those services. As opposed to the traditional model, which is, here's some line items that say revenues and expenses. This is just a more, hopefully I don't stumble over this word, communicative process.
Agreed. Except what I have trouble with is, is, so if, if, if there's one of these created for every fund, when are all of these that have been created for every fund discussed and presented? Is that prior to creating the actual numeric budget or at the time? I mean, usually when budget begins, we're presented with a-
Balanced budget.
A balanced budget. So, does that mean we're gonna have more meetings with the, based on these documents, with the budget committee before a balanced budget is produced? No?
Step three.
I, I look at it as-
I don't see where these are.
These, these are developed by the staff.
Developed by staff.
Between steps three and four.
Okay.
And we are reviewing them and making changes, suggestion, the budget committee.
We being counsel. Okay.
During step five.
Right.
So, as, as a department head comes in, they're sharing, they're sharing their worksheet, this document with us, in terms of what, what services are being provided. Because if you look at earlier steps, from step one with the community meetings and step two, establishing priorities, that's the way we communicate to the staff what services we want. They take that information, put it in this document, and then explain through the process of completing this worksheet, how they're gonna pay for those services that we've established as priorities.
So, we'll discuss these at the time we have a proposed balanced budget-
Yeah.
For each fund. Right?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay, all right.
Is that the way you understand it, Eva?
That's what I understood too, because then you could say, if you cut something out of the budget, you're gonna see your cause and effect, because you're gonna lose the service.
I'm fine, I'm fine with it now, okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Mary Ann. Good report. Next item on our agenda is to discuss boards and commissions. And we are at about quarter to ten. Just wanna kind of take the temperature here. Are we interested in a discussion of boards and commissions, or do we wanna postpone that to another work session?
I suggest we go a little ways into it anyway, just to get our feet wet.
Okay? Fifteen minutes?
Feet wet, yeah.
Okay. Anyone object to that? So, we had a report for, for our last meeting, which has been put on our tables again. It's the subject of city boards, commissions and committees. Does everyone have a copy of that? Behind it are also resolutions and ordinances that establish our committees. And behind that are the same list of committees, committee members, phone numbers, contact information. So, we'll be working with three documents there. At the last meeting, if you would, take a look at the second page of the staff report. At the bottom, a list of options. A week ago, we looked at these options. And by consensus, we eliminated option one, that we, we said we did not wanna keep operating as being currently done. And we talked about using a combination of option two and three. So, reconsidering how to operate with boards, commissions, committees, come up with a new approach and realign boards, committees, boards and committees to match the city council priorities, direction and community vision. Okay, does everyone remember that? Okay. So, I think that's, I think that's a good starting place for us to talk about. Is there an interest in realigning these committees with our established priorities? Those being emergency services department, finance, economic development, communication, rebuilding community trust, enhancing, enhancing infrastructure and organizational development. So, six, six priorities. Is that a good target?
Yes.
Gail?
I think so.
Okay.
Yes.
Burke? Randy?
Yeah.
Tom? Okay. So, in, in, in looking at that, then, I, I think that our number one priority being emergency services department. I think we have, we took the step at the last meeting to create a public safety task force, which is a committee that's, that's a temporary committee. That's looking at resolving some long-term, you know, issues with that department. We also have a proposal that we create a council subcommittee. We also have a proposal that we create a, a council subcommittee on public safety, which we haven't taken action on yet. Is that, is that adequate? Are we, are we comfortable using those, at least what we've done so far with the task force? Or do we want, um, some other committee to be working on, on that priority, emergency services department?
I think that's enough.
Anyone disagree? They don't think that's enough? Okay. So in terms of that priority, we've, we've got the public safety task force. Now, finance, being our next priority, for me, I, I automatically think of budget committee. Budget committee is created by ordinance, it's also regulated by state law, but it, um, its job is to, is to work with city finance, and that, that's one of our priorities. Uh, but if you look at our list of, um, of, um, of items un, within that priority of finance, we're talking about determining the best use for the old fire station, um, comprehensive budget process, a review of all fees and charges, uh, monthly reports, I think we've actually addressed that tonight, uh, closing out grants, um, RFQ for audit. You go through that list, you might have some things that don't necessarily fall under the purview of the budget committee. So is there, is there a need for a different committee to, to, uh, to work with, work through those issues that the budget committee wouldn't necessarily be dealing with? Just another example, outsourcing the utility billing, budget committee's probably not gonna take that out. Selling the old fire hall, the old fire station, budget committee probably not gonna take that out.
What are your ideas to, because the more I think about this, just realigning the boards and committees, match our priorities, is instead of a hybrid of the two, I think three's a better option, just kinda rethinking all of this. Kind of what you talked about, still didn't have that discussion last time, but what are you thinking? What, who would you have do those jobs that you just listed off, other than with the budget committee? Who come in and do the budgetary process?
Well, um, I, I, I mean, I think one suggestion is that you create a finance committee. I think another suggestion is that the council takes up those tasks and oversees those. And I'd be open to any other suggestions.
Oh, and the council does do those tasks right now, probably, they'll just keep them within the, within the council.
The, the budget committee traditionally is just, you know, crank the budget out, but they could be called into action for other items, I, I believe, it's allowed by state law. Their advisory at that point to advise the council on topics. Wouldn't have to be all fourteen of the budget committee, it could be a smaller group, but, um, there is an existing committee, I guess, that could be tapped. It would be job growth for them to be involved in some of the discussions, um, that's, you know, also covered during the budget process. So I, I guess I wouldn't be afraid of, or opposed to calling them in to help solve some issues.
And that's, that's happened before, we've re-convened the budget committee at times. Dale?
Yeah, but I don't think we're saying the same thing, because the definition of this budget committee has the members and numbers and who's a quorum. I don't think the budget committee, you can't have five people meet as a budget committee. And if you were gonna select.
And, and like I said, we're on the budget committee as it is, so it'd have to be something different.
Well, and I think thus we come back to a financial committee, which could be populated from numbers.
Could call it that, sure.
But I think it has, if we're gonna have a group to address it, I think it has to be a separate group, even if the members are common, then the budget committee.
I guess, I suppose it could be a sub, treated as a subcommittee of the, of the budget, but I'd probably prefer not to do it that way.
Yeah, I'd agree.
So, um, the, the other option, I guess, maybe I didn't throw out earlier, is that if you look at some of these issues, like J is complete, uh, electric rate study, including tier two, and we decided we wanted to do a really thorough analysis of that, give more community input. We could do something similar to what we're doing with our economic development task force and our public safety task force, is create a, create a task force or a temporary committee that is given a specific charge on a specific issue. At the time that we need that.
I, I like that where you, you create it, they do their work, they report, they're done.
But you give a timeline, and so it does, it's not a committee that got created that just kept rolling over.
Are, are those what we used to call mayor's committee, committees, they're only interim and they're not.
Used to be.
They're not, they're not governed by resolution or ad hoc committees?
Yeah, I was, I was looking at one of these reports that had, that listed mayor's committees, and it, it included, okay, so in resolution twelve twenty-two, um, that, that document, it talks about mayor's committees, and it includes budget, planning, parks and rec.
Oh, really?
That's, yeah, this is the resolution passed in May of this year.
Oh, okay, I, my little recall was, you know, just like we're talking, that the mayor could create subcommittees that.
Yeah.
Were ad hoc in nature and with specific purposes for a short period of time.
And if you look at our council rules, um, they've created, uh, standing committees, they created a list of standing committees, which includes planning commission, anything that was created by an ordinance, with planning commission, budget. And they also have temporary committees, which is, I think, what you're.
Okay, alright.
So when that topic arises, then you would create the committee, I mean, like a ninety-day committee or?
Yeah, and in the council rules, it talks about the, the mayor creating the temporary committee in writing, establishing the length of time, so.
And, and, and I don't mean, well, I, I do hop around, so I'm not gonna apologize for that, but, you know, the, as we're discussing, some of these I just don't understand the purpose and scope of. Like the, the, like the charter review committee. Are we doing a charter review?
Well, Gail, I think this is the, I think the answer to that is no, but I think the, I think the purpose of going through our, of trying to align our priorities with the committees is, once we go through our priorities and talk about, well, which committees serve that priority, whichever committees we haven't talked about yet, we then have to say, well.
Oh, okay.
These don't align with our priorities.
Okay, okay, I understand.
Is that a committee that we need to, to keep? Or are we comfortable continuing with our priorities, does that make sense?
Alright, so we're gonna talk about our needs first, and then historical, okay, that's fine.
If that's, if that's a, if everyone's comfortable with going at it that way, we could go at it any different way, but.
Okay.
To me, I, I think if, if the focus is on what are our pri, what we just established as our priorities,
Yeah.
Now, we've, we've mentioned task force for public safety, we've mentioned budget committee, and so far, we have, that's all we've done.
Yeah.
And then at the end, we can, yeah.
I, I, I think it would be a good idea to consider, we'll talk more later, but, uh, the feasibility of a financial ad hoc committee, because I think there is a lot of rate issues and services issues commingled that a committee could get, could, could pull, pull some initial information together, you know, working with Paul and everybody, as a foundation to which of those we should pursue and maybe spend money on to get more detail on, but.
Okay. So other committees that we, we have a, oh, Tom, sorry.
I would just, I, I think that there should be, this is your talking about there, where it's, um, it's priority push by the, by the, the council, and then created by the, the mayor, is when we see, we've got a list of priority of things we wanna get done, and we need to develop a committee that, uh, we've got an ordinance of committees, and to me, I think we should hang on to whatever ones the ordinance equals others, and then follow the process as if we need a committee, like we have already created one, the task force, do that, and, and the problem, I think, that we get with committees, and why there's still a bunch of mine here, is we aren't, we aren't following through, we need to make sure that however we do it, we have a process that goes, this is what the committee, this, this is what we're asking committee to do. Just go out there and say, committee, give a bunch of ideas, these are some things we want, she does. We should have some type of a, a form of how we set them up. Is this what we ask you to do, this is what we want from you, and this is the timeline that we want from you. Create a committee that isn't part of the, part of an ordinance. And then you can create, create committees as you go. But the big part of it, to me, is, is organize a start and a, and a end, and a reason what, a reason why you're doing it. And so they have direction, and if we put that together of how we do it and how we end it, then we just create committees, and we drop them off, and they're, they're done with, uh, with, with our, with our line of priorities. And it just, that seems, it's simple, cause what we're gonna end up doing is getting, instead of J, you're gonna have all the way to Z down here with all these, because we're, we're creating lots of things, do lots of things. But, but just what, but it looks seems to me is, just what you've been talking about, is, is, gonna put an end date to it, you know, start date, why we, why the council wants to, where we expect from them, and then, and they, and thank you, and all the way. And then pile through on, when that date comes, we're, we're done.
We're done.
We're getting off, cutting off, cutting off the list.
And you need more work done, by the way.
Right, well, and, and yeah. And you're getting done when you specifically, you're not running around here doing things that, that we're not trying to get done.
Right.
That's where I would be at, and I would.
Jeff?
Tom's idea has good merit, but also I think that might give us more participation from the public, cause if they know it's a small, focused issue, and there's an end date, it's just not this continuing committee meeting, and they have a deadline to go, and they can commit, they, they can mentally commit to this timeframe and know they're done at the end, I think that, that helps recruitment, uh, for committee members and getting the input from the public that we want. But also, I somewhat disagree a little bit, we had one, uh, committee member approach the mayor about looking at redoing the amount of seats that are sitting on the tourism committee, I believe, and they're at least, at least looking at that, and so we're gonna have to open up what is in accordance with our resolu, or ordinances, and so we'll have to open up to look at that, to have that part for us to look at. So I think we have to be flexible enough to do that, and not just say, no, we can't. The ordinance is one of there, we can't touch those, we have to open up those, ones that are guided by ordinances, and be able to adjust those accordingly.
And, and Dale brought up another one earlier today, which is the museum, uh, committee. When we talked about the fund, is there's a question about whether that, um, whether that could be funded through transient room tax. So if those are, I mean, if, if a museum is, uh, a site for a tourist, you know, then maybe it, you know, maybe, maybe the museum comes under, um, downtown revitalization that we're trying to do. Right? Uh, so, so that, you know, that's another one, we could look at that ordinance and perhaps change it so that it gets more aligned with our priorities. Now, I, I think that, I think that planning commission and budget are, um, have to be done a certain way. You can't really change those ordinances. I don't have a problem looking at them, but I think, you know, there's the state laws that regulate it, that basically told us, this is, this is how you have to establish those committees. But I, I, I agree, I don't necessarily wanna say, if there's an ordinance, it's off the table. I think it's part of the process of, of realigning with our priorities, to look at, well, what needs to be changed about this committee so that it, it is in alignment with the priority. So, Tom?
And, and I've, I've got no problem looking at the, the ordinances, but I, but again, even there, I wanna be, I don't wanna get into those ordinance, and then hash over the whole, the whole ordinance. Let's, if there's, as we're saying, the, the, the committee member is an issue, let's, let's talk about it as an issue, and, and, um, for me, if, if we can keep the ordinance intact, as much as we can keep it intact, keep it intact. If, if, if there's a good enough argument to change ordinance, get something specific about the ordinance, yeah. But let, you always have a discussion, I have no problem having a discussion about it. But I don't, it takes a while to change, to change ordinance law. I don't want to go wholesale into these things, I wanna be very specific about what we're doing, then, and then not start going, well, what about this in the ordinance, what about that? That's, you know, this is specific things, and, and work on the specific things.
So, okay, other comments about that? Could we then, we've, we've talked about finance, are there any other thoughts on the finance priority and, and how that, how we would realign committees? Gail's suggesting look at the feasibility of a, of a finance committee. We've also suggested look at, um, temporary or task force-type committees for specific things. But nothing to be created right now. No changes to be made right now.
That's up to you.
I'm just getting input.
Yeah.
So then the next priority is economic development. And our, our number one item under that is revitalize downtown core area. And we already have in place a task, uh, economic development task force. Uh, we haven't really decided how we want to fill that. It was two members of the council, um, previous council had decided to put a third person on it. There's also members of the port commission, they've re, they're reworking how they're doing that. But in the meantime, there's been that creation of a steering committee for, for, um, for downtown revitalization. So.
Do we need both?
Both what?
Is economic development and the downtown revitalization good?
That's, that's a good question. I, I think that there's a, it can, I, I would like to see, my, my vision would be that the economic development task force is a joint meeting of the port and the city council. Cause I think that is the area where our interests and the port's interests coincide, and where we have the most potential for cooperation, the most potential for growth for the community. So I, I guess I look, and I don't think that happens every month. I think that happens, you know, probably quarterly. But it's a way to, to establish jointly what our goals are for economic development task force, for economic development, so they can, they can share our, their concerns, what, what their visions are. We can share our concerns, what our vision is, and we can move forward together as a, as a, as two boards. So I think that, but I also think we've got this steering committee working on, on downtown core area, which is one of our number one economic priorities.
Okay.
I would like to see us find a way to put resources behind that, that movement.
Which that?
The downtown core, the downtown revitalization. To me, that's, I mean, I think there's a lot of things on this list for economic development. That's, we know we've got a downtown, it's there, it's something we can always work on. It's not, it's not something ephemeral that's, you know, that if we can get a governor to sign off, if we can get a Department of Interior to sign off, maybe we have a resort. Or if there's a water transfer, if a multinational corporation wants to put a facility in our port park, those are, there's a lot of ifs surrounding, a lot of things on that economic development. We hope those are gonna happen, but we know we've got a downtown, we know we've got property, we know we've got, um, buildings, we've got businesses functioning. If we can start putting our resources together with the port, cooperation with, with community members to, to really build that as, as an economic engine, um, then we've got something we know we can work on. So I, I'd like to see us start to, to align behind that. And I, to me, that's, you talk about, I mean, the museum, I think, fits into that, like Dale mentioned earlier. I think, um, I think tourism is one of the big things for economic development. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see us get, get behind, uh, get behind that movement for downtown revitalization. And I think that getting our, our, uh, our, our tourism committee efforts aligned with that would be a good first step, and would, would really get, start to, start to get even more momentum in that movement. Jeff? and would, would really get, start to, start to get even more momentum in that movement. Joe?
I support that a hundred percent, the idea of doing that. The other thing that came to mind was when we were at the opening for the port building, having discussions with Stevenson's mayor and their manager. We as a group, or informal or formal, talk with our partners across the river. So we have still a regional approach for economic development for us in this region too. I think it's more of an informal process, but we have to keep that in mind, that we have our neighbors across the river, that we are tied to what goes on. And having, including some of them in that discussion, or just having that informal process too. Just wanna throw that out there, but it spurred a conversation I had with the mayor.
Gail?
Well, one question I have about this downtown development group, is that a task force or a committee, whatever it is?
It's a, I think it's called the steering committee, downtown revitalization steering committee.
All right.
Which came out of a, a joint, our joint meeting with the port.
Right. And, and there were all kinds of things thrown up on the board, and I think I understand the, the intent and scope. But for, for that group to accomplish anything, there's gonna have to be some money available. Even for the simplest thing. I mean, I talked about painting, you know. How do they get funded?
I think that's, yeah, that's, that's a good question. I think that's a question that, that the, that the steering committee will be looking at. Uh, I think it's important for us to be thinking about that. Um, I think it's important for the port to be thinking about that. The community should be funding, in my mind, should be funding that, that group. I think there's, I don't think we have to say they, that, you know, just throw money at it. I think there's, it's a, it's a volunteer group, and I think there's some, some committed volunteers that are really interested in giving their time and, and doing a cleanup. That's, that's, uh, what do they call that, sweat equity, but, you know, you're, but, but you're right. I mean, even if we were to get, you know, gallons of paint donated for a painting party, you gotta buy the paint brushes, you know?
Yeah.
Turpentine or whatever, so.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, I'm sorry, Tom, just finish here. Wouldn't tourism funding qualify to support some of those targeted goals?
Yeah, and it's, it's back to the same issue that, uh, that we talked about earlier. You know, I, I think it's a question, I think that certainly some of those goals, absolutely, um, fit in there. As, as for some of the, you know, the details of parsing out what the different words in the statutes mean, you know, I can interpret it for you, but you can't count on my interpretation and same thing for everyone that doesn't have it. That isn't qualified to answer a legal question. But, but yeah, I, I, I think that's a good idea. And I, I mean, I'm encouraged to see that a lot of tourism committee members are already involved in that and have, have been attending those, those meetings, and some of them are even on the, um, the steering committee. But I sure would like to see us, like I said, get those resources behind the downtown revitalization, since that is our economic development goal.
Yeah, I think Paul had a, on the steering committee, there was a, a meeting coming up. They haven't scheduled it yet, but I think Moplin and Pilot Rock, I think, have some ideas that, uh, you know, it doesn't take a lot of money, you know, that, what worked for Moplin and, um, but I think the other night we had a good meeting, I think, between the two, and also the input from the merchants in town. I mean, I think, you know, that, that's really helpful too, you know, the, the store, they have a, um, you know, a lot of times you don't hear from them, and, and they had a chance to, you know, speak up. I thought that was a pretty positive, you know, meeting, yeah.
Tom?
So the, the steering committee, it's a committee on Tom, was it, what was it, what was it created from?
It was created from the meet, were you at that, the December fifth, we had the, the joint meeting of the port and the city council?
Okay, so that whole group thing, they pulled out of that, okay.
Yeah, we did a visioning exercise, and then, and then we, we, you know, Paul had his threat that the sheriff wasn't gonna let people out until they signed up and.
Okay, so then, so then that seems to me that's where we, we have created something, the port and.
Yeah.
That was, that was created something. So that's where the questions you have, I think all those questions should come in. The one you got, the port and, port and city has their, not every month, every few months, whatever. They have their meeting to get together. And coming over with where they, kinda where they have, where they wanna go. And I think that that should be, where they come from that should be presented to the steering committee. This is where we kinda wanna head, and now steering committee, we need you. And along with that, along with that, that should be in that, should come out. How do we fund things, what are we after, how do we, with every, with both those groups there? All those questions should come up in that, so, so again, this whole thing is, is unorganized. Process that everybody's involved in, and we're all going on board, and we don't have somebody out here doing this and somebody out here doing that. We wanna make sure that whatever we do here is, we're all on the same page, moving ahead on. And that's all, that should be part of the funding, how we do that should be discussed in that meeting and then, and then conveyed to the steering, and maybe the steering committees out looking. They can meet more often. We're meeting every three months, but maybe they meet every week, or a few days, whatever, to, to, to push ahead our, our agenda.
Right.
And, and one of the things that, if you, that, that the steering committee is gonna be looking at is subcommittees on, you know, one is gonna be on logistics, like a group that's going to, you know, get the, buy the paint brushes or get the paint. Or, or the weed eaters, or whatever it is for the, for the cleanups. And, and there's gonna be another group that's involved with events and, it's called the promotion committee, right? The marketing and, and events and things like that. And to me, that's, that's what I think traditionally, at least part of what the tourism committee has done. And I really see that fitting better in the, in this joint movement, community-wide movement of economic development focused on downtown revitalization.
I, I, I agree, and that's where, I mean, why, why wouldn't we look at integrating those two?
Yeah, I.
The downtown revitalization and tourism committee, I mean, there, there's a lot, to, to me, it seemed like there was a lot of overlap. And I don't know if there's a need for both committees. One, I think it would help maintain effective communication. Two, it'd help provide some funding.
Yeah, and I, that's, that's the way I see it too. I think that the, the interests are the same. But when you have a, a tourism committee, it's, it's sort of operated on a, in a, on a separate plane when what we're trying to do is bring the community together, port and city cooperating on this downtown revitaliz-, revitalization effort. So, yeah, I don't know what the reason why we wouldn't wanna do that is. I, Tom?
Well, my only thought on it is the, is I think tourism's main focus, their main focus and the, and the main amount of what their money goes to is to promote you. So they're more promotional towards it, is, is what most of their money's supposed to go, to promote what's going on at Cascade Locks here, not necessarily the, the actual brick and mortar that I think maybe some of their stuff is, is looking to do. They're, they're not as much of the brick and mortar as they are trying to get, trying to promote people here. So they're, um, they're not out on the street cleaning things up, cleaning things and all that. They're, they're trying to, you know, they're putting together web, what, they're putting together websites, they're putting together brochures and all that. That's kind of their biggest thing.
Yeah, I, I just remember from the discussion that, you know, at a higher level, it seemed like the whole intent of that group was to encourage, uh, people coming to Cascade Locks. One, by cleaning it up, expanding services and, you know, promoting the town i- in a way to, to encourage growth. That's where I see some of the overlap.
Yeah, and, and I agree. I think, I think promotion is part of, if you look at the, um, what, what we put up on the, on the wall there in that, that economic development task force meeting, that's, that's one chunk of what we gotta do, is we gotta promote the town. I think that steering committee is gonna do that. I, I would like to see us, since it's our, one of our number one goals, I'd like to see us get behind that effort and, um, and, you know, what work has been done already, get more, get even more so coordinated with the port and pointed toward revitalizing downtown through promotions. But, but the other thing that you have to remember is, um, the, the ORS that, that specifies how TRT dollars can be used specifically does talk about brick and mortar projects. And that's one of the things, I, I think Portland used their TRT dollars to fund the convention center.
That's what they're for.
Yeah, if, right. Well, it's promotions and, and brick and mortar. So there's, there's, there's possibility to do a lot of those different things. For example, one of the things that was mentioned was, hey, it rains a lot in Cascade Locks. Wouldn't it be nice if we had a facility for tourists to get out of the rain? And that came up at that meeting. Right? So that's, that ties right in with the downtown revitalization as well as with the goals of, of, uh, of what we've set and how we're expected to, to spend transient room dollars. So.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether it says to make shelters and all that. I think, I think, I think it does kinda focus you in on a convention center, that's what they, the, the towns were, I think that's what they, they went after more convention, they, they up it, and they, they changed the, the percentage of it so that people could actually come up with enough money to, to build these facilities to, because they, they look at convention centers as, as things that bring people to town, to events, uh, uh, facilities for that. I'm not sure whether the, the rain shelters.
I haven't seen it for a while, but I think it was visitor facilities, it was a little, little generic. It could, it could be a rain shelter, could be a convention center.
And those kind of details, you know, probably beyond our ability to interpret, but, but it's, it's something to consider. And, and it's, to me, another reason why getting this kind of alignment with our priorities, with what the port exists to do, with what we wanna accomplish, is makes sense. So I'm gonna suggest that a, a good step would be for us to have a meeting with the tourism committee next month. And talk about how they see their role fitting in with, um, with the, the steering committee and the, the downtown revitalization effort. And, and hopefully reaching an agreement on, um, best way to move forward. So is that something that we'd like to see at a council meeting next month?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, are there, is there anything else within, um, economic development that we should talk about with, with some of our committees? I think planning commission came up once, as a, as an idea, have a planning commission member on the, the task force.
Yeah, I talked about that. I think it's important that we do, just because of the land use laws and what our master plan is for the downtown, to have that knowledge base go to that and be a part of that discussion.
And we do have an opening on the planning commission, so, um, maybe that's something we can bring up in the interviews if you're free. So, anything else on economic development with regard to pace? Um, so communicating and, and rebuilding community trust is, um, is a fourth priority. How does that fit with the existing committees? Do we need a committee, um, to work on that, or is that something that we, we keep as, as a council? I said we keep the council. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the things you're doing there is up in that, in the discussion you have to do, we've figured out.
Okay. Uh, so enhancing infrastructure is the next priority. Uh, including things like, um, pavement condition study, alternative, develop alternative energy systems, the master plans for sewer water, like, um, updating the electric rates, the tier two rates, electric master plan, and everyone's favorite water system, made the list too. So, um, what do we see there for, um, aligning a, a committee with that priority?
Is that the city's first, is the mayor's first?
I don't know that the city services committee has any specific direction for this council.
Exactly, you're, the city services committee, it's just the five members?
Were, were you, Tom?
So it's utilities, utilities, and ounces, and budgets, and budgets.
So you're looking at resolution, uh, twelve twenty-two?
Yeah, so twenty-two, um, mayor's committees, I understand. That's not a, um, and that's not an ordinance, it's listed, it's not, it's, it is a resolution.
I think that, uh, resolution twelve twenty-two kinda muddies the water on
Some of the ordinance.
how committees are created. But that's, it's just a resolution we have. Some are created by ordinances, some are not, but all of them are listed here.
But that seems to follow kinda the questions you were, that you were at.
So, the committee will, uh, purposely, the city services committee would be to advise city council regarding matters of public works, electric, cemetery, and emergency services department. May also be requested to advise council on utility rate analysis and recommendations of the budgets for operation and capital improvements.
And that follow what you were?
It, I think it might follow some of those, yeah. So the question then is, do we keep city services committee because it aligns with those? Or do we look, like what we did with the finance, do we look at, when each of those issues comes forward, like tier two rate study or, um, uh, sewer master plan, do we create, um, specifically defined timeline task forces that address that one particular issue?
I, I'd be more in favor of task forces with the specific timeframe that Tom related to, rather than have committees standing by for an event. We can create them as needed, because the other advantage I think that allows is when you create the committee, you can choose people that might have specific background, experience, or knowledge related to the specific topic. You know, I mean, with standing committees, you get a broad base, but you don't always want a broad base. You may want some targeted knowledge on some particular issues.
So then, uh, is that something also we'd like to bring in the members of the city services committee to meet with the council and just kind of express that and get their input and reach some kind of agreement on those?
I, I don't know much about the city services committee, but, uh, or if they ever met or have met or do meet, but I have to defer. My attitude is, you know, we arrive at a decision and communicate it. I don't know, is, I'm gonna hear anything different from the members that's gonna change my opinion.
According to this, they're all terminated for September first, two thousand and eleven.
Well, that is, that's, I don't know why, that wasn't changed in the report. The committee li- that wasn't changed in the report.
Oh, okay.
Which one are you looking at?
I think he's got the old.
He's looking at the report. The committee list is, is two thousand and thirteen, which is what was said at the last meeting.
Oh, okay, it was correct, yeah. Okay, so that, there, there's the more.
That's a turn one there.
I mean, in, in my mind, unless it's, I'm just trying to be efficient, but, would be to communicate it to the city, to, to the committee members, and if they have questions, let them come to council.
What's your thought on that, Tom?
Um, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna, or.
Well, the idea was communicate to the committee that we're more interested in, in addressing those things through task force. And then if they have questions about that, invite them to come, address, address the council.
Yeah.
You'd rather do it that way? Other comments on that? Okay, um, so, um, little, let's see here. Then the last, last priority was organizational development, um, which includes things like a study to determine staff workload, um, review and strengthen fundamental systems and policies. review and strengthen fundamental systems and policies, and look into the need for a deputy recorder and senior planner. Do we see a need for a committee to address that?
I, 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 I don't, I kinda see those as peculiar to the staff and city administrator developing a recommendation, more than citizen input initially.
Other comments on that?
I feel the same way. Same as Gail.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of our priorities, and then we've talked about a plan for, um, Budget Committee, we've talked about a plan.
Finance, oh, yeah, Budget Committee.
Budget Committee, I'm talking about existing.
Exactly, I'm sorry.
We've talked about, uh, well, we'll just back up, we've talked about our, our preference for creating, um, temporary task force to deal with specific issues rather than, as Gail said, a committee and waiting, waiting for a topic. We've also, we've also addressed, uh, Budget Committee and, and their role, and I think most of the meeting tonight was about that. We've talked about tourism, we've talked about city services. We haven't talked about Planning Commission, and I, I would just suggest that we go through the list of committees.
Right.
Using this, this document that lists the committees and the members. And then just kind of address what we, the need we see for different, different committees that we haven't already talked about. And, and how to, how to move forward, so, City Council, we've got Budget, is there any discussion on the Budget Committee?
Wait a minute, wait, uh, let me catch up with page.
We're, we're right here.
Okay.
First page, yeah. I'll just mention now, while I'm thinking about it, I think it's something for us to come back and talk about later, is a process for making appointments for the task force, we've developed a process, the Public Safety Task Force, we've developed a process. We may wanna talk about that for vacancies that are, that are coming up soon, or that already exist, but we'll come back to that later. So, other discussion on Budget. We have state law that, that establishes. Next one on my list is Charter Review. All of those positions, um, terminate a couple days, end of this year. Is a Charter Review something that we want to, um, to do at this time? Or should we just let, eliminate that committee?
I'd eliminate it.
Eliminate it.
So I'm not hearing anyone say they wanna review the charter?
Well, I, I, go ahead.
I don't think, you don't have to eliminate the committee, you can just not fill those positions until we feel a need, if there ever comes a point in time to fill those positions and have a review of the charter, if we need to do that, leave that committee there, but just the position's open and it deals with that way, as needed.
But why have a committee if it's not staffed? Why have it staffed?
This kinda seems like one of those things that Tom was talking about where it like started out and then there wasn't an end to it, so they just sat here forever.
Well, there wasn't an end to that particular. We, we made a report, we brought it to the council, council decided not to act.
Yeah, so it's not done by ordinance, it's done, it's done by ordinance, not a resolution?
That committee is not created by a resolution ordinance, it was, it was appointed by a mayor.
So there's not a process that we have to worry about that's gonna encumber it if you had to redo, if you had to establish one again?
The way I look at it is you'd follow your council rules, which the mayor would create a committee, give it a purpose.
Right.
Fill it and give it a timeline. Um, so City Services is the next one on the list. We've talked about that already.
Eliminating it.
Eliminating it, we'll need to, you know, address it through a resolution, 'cause there's a resolution that created it.
That's fine.
That's back to what, uh, what Jeff was talking about with process, so we'll have to, we'll have a report back. Comp Plan Review Committee. That's another one that the, um, looks like the term is up in a couple days.
I'd, I'd eliminate it.
And, yeah, I, I've asked this.
And that's the same thing, you wouldn't need it until you need it.
Yeah, when we, when we wanna do a comp plan review, we'd create the comp plan review committee. We just briefly discussed Museum. And that's another one where I feel like there's some alignment with what we're trying to accomplish by, um, working together with the board. I'm not sure what that means for that committee, but I wonder if that's something where we should invite them to, um, to a meeting like we're doing with tourism. Just to talk about our goals and, and hear from them on their goals are, and how, how it aligns with what the community's trying to accomplish with downtown.
Yeah, either that or do the same thing and just let them know, let them come if they got questions.
There's an ordinance that would have to be, yeah, would have to be.
But that's a.
Either way, you'd have to.
At the fact, yeah, I don't know why you guys are so worried about whether there's an ordinance or not, that's just a administrative procedure, you know, I mean, there's nothing.
The bigger question is, is it something that we're ready, we're ready to just eliminate, or is it something that we're, we'd like to have further discussions on?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we were talking about eliminating, um, that committee, 'cause they're, I think these are the people that kinda keep it going.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
As long as we're, as long as we got a museum, I think we need a committee to staff it and care for those artifacts and things that are on the building.
Are most of these people that are leaving, are they going to renew, are they, uh, I see your.
I would say it's home over there.
Your, your term is up. Are they gonna renew?
So, so you, you've been on, you were on this committee? So, what do they do?
They go over, um, things that are coming that are being given to the museum, uh, directions, they can go around, the people that show up out of
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, they, they go over what's been going on, and then monitoring what's there and how to take care of it. Not very often, just every few, every few months.
I'll just put it out there, my preference is to.
But there are all people that are really committed to the.
Yes.
Okay.
People are really committed to the museum.
My, my preference would be to invite them to a council meeting to, to have that similar discussion about, um, our effort to align with our, uh, our core goals and our goals for revitalizing downtown, and find out what role they, they see for themselves in that. And if there's a need to, to address, um, you know, the ordinance and redo that ordinance, or, um, you know, how the budget's created or things like that, um, that could come out of that, that joint meeting.
Okay.
So, I'd probably put that as a, um, at a different meeting after, subsequent to the, the meeting with the tourism.
Yeah.
Any, any objection to that?
No.
Okay. That takes us to Parks and Rec, uh, we haven't discussed Parks and Rec, it is a committee created by ordinance. Is there, Rayanne or Kathy, could you give us an overview of how that operates, or are you ready to do that, this guy, I'm sort of, I'm excited you with that request.
They made monthly, they get, you guys get copies of their minutes, um, they run the rec program in the gym down here. I think it's two nights a week, they have the kids come in for two hours, I think, you know, they can play, run around in the gym, during the summer, they have about a month-long program where they do some swimming and watch some movies. And that's about it, I mean, they do, do, they try to do, um, like Halloween carnival, they try to do, participate in that.
It kinda seems like they have ongoing discussions about possible events and this and that, just from reading their minutes, they seem engaged.
Easter egg hunt.
Easter egg hunt.
Pardon?
The Easter egg hunt's another big one.
Oh, I missed that.
There, there's also, it, it's, and there's, some of these events and staffing are funded through the general fund.
Right.
Is that right?
Yes, we pay for, um, two, uh, of the, um, activity directors, or activity, uh, people, it's funded out of the general fund.
And then aren't there other expenses for, for Parks and Rec events that are, that are also paid for out of the general fund?
What was that last part?
Also, that are also paid for out of the general fund.
So when they have, have a Halloween carnival, they might have to buy prizes, so that's funded out of the general fund, when they, um, do the, um, the Santa, um, most of that was donated, but if they had to buy candy canes for Santa to have something, that would come out of that, that department's expense.
Yeah, when you say the general fund, it comes out of their department expense.
But it's in the general fund.
I understood, understood.
So, and then there's also a discrepancy, I think it's important to point out, that program directors, um, are, are not necessarily these committee members, they're actually paid volunteers for the city that are not connected to the appointment process for this committee. We've had members of this committee fill those positions, those volunteer positions, but they get paid for their time when they run
Right.
the, the events here, um, but they're not necessarily, there, there's, it's, there's a, there's a difference between those two positions, the committee and the program director. So.
Except some of the people are the same.
The people are the same, yes, but they don't have to be.
Right, I understood.
Okay, so then the other question for me, a couple issues with this one, I, I think since I've been on council, we haven't had seven people on, on this committee, there have always been vacancies. So that, that just kind of leads me to the natural conclusion that maybe we should redo this ordinance and change the number of people. And, yeah, 'cause when you have a bigger group, it makes it harder to deal, you know, procedurally for, um,
Sure.
requirement requirements and things, but, but in general, I think you're more efficient with a smaller group of people. And, and if there were more interest, more people interested, I'd want more people involved, but it doesn't appear that there, that there is. Over the, and now you, you guys have different experiences on council, I don't know if you remember that, that you've been on longer than I have, Tom, Randy.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think last week Gail was telling me a smaller group was better. And this week you're telling us that.
That's my bias.
He's changed.
So.
Well, well, to me, it doesn't make any wonder there. And again, I, I don't see why we take the time to, unless we're all changing anything out, 'cause if they don't have enough, they don't, they don't have enough people, they don't have enough people, and they, if, if they're working okay and it's good by it for them, if it hasn't become an issue for them to be able to come up to meetings and do other things, then it doesn't seem to mean we need to take the time to, to go through some process to take down members.
Okay, other thoughts on that?
The other, having a spot open is if there's somebody of interest in the community, they could be on the committee without, without kicking somebody else off.
So I'm not hearing any support for the idea of changing that ordinance yet.
Kind of, the opinion's to turn it down to five.
So marking, Gail?
The five, it looks like they're, they're on there for, you know, one to two years, um, you know, like Randy was saying, maybe one vacancy, you know, maybe somebody might wanna come in, you know, later on, it's really, um, you know, that wants to be on there, but.
If there's someone, yeah, if there's someone committed that wants to get involved in Parks and Rec, they don't necessarily have to be appointed to the committee.
Right.
They could show up at the meetings, they can volunteer at the events, I don't think you have to keep a vacancy open, it just doesn't seem like.
I agree.
So that puts it at four of us that are.
Yeah, for, keep it a five.
Making that, making that.
Right, so they must volunteer.
The other question I have about this is the park side of it, and since I've been on council, I haven't seen, um, this, this group too much with parks, we've got a completely undeveloped park, Tooth Rock Park, we've got Gateway Park, is there any interest in having this, uh, this committee address better use or enhancements to our parks?
My, my guess is this group's focused on the recreational side of it, um, I think it'd be a public works or a public services, if, if we're gonna develop a park, it'd be, it wouldn't be that group, it'd be somebody more geared that could tap into an architect, could tap into public works.
Yeah, I think that's just an old, old, old title for the committee.
So, then maybe we're changing it to just a recreation committee?
Yeah, or babysitting.
Well, they do adult recs, adult recreation programs.
Yeah, that's bingo, that's bingo.
No, it's, uh, they do field trips, where they have.
Haven't passed a, I don't.
Dinner. Okay, people aren't around anymore, they have dinner at their house.
Okay, um, so we've got a couple items on that for future action, Planning Commission. There's a vacancy there now, uh, we've talked about maybe having a Planning Commissioner be involved with Economic Development Task Force or Downtown Steering Committee. And to me, this brings us back to that, the discussion of earlier, how would you, is, is there an interest in, um, creating a process, establishing a process for filling these committees, um, similar to what we've done with Public Safety Task Force, where there's a standardized application and an interview process, it's been done that way with Planning Commission before. Last time we did an appointment to Planning Commission, it was just, if you're interested, write your name down, maybe in a letter, and then the mayor makes the decision and appoints you, so there's, there's been two different models.
I think it's important for that process, and I think we should do it with all the committees, to do that, that gives a, that's a temperature gauge of what goes on, and that just kinda formalizes our recommendations to you, whoever sits on the committee, this is who you would pick to be part of this, yeah, this question's an answer session right there, instead of this letter, and it just, it validates a lot of stuff.
Other thoughts on that process, Randy?
Well, I think it, I, I agree, it helps, you know, our, whatever our goals are, that can get communicated as part of the, part of the interview process. The only other, the only, the other thought I had, and don't mention any names, but, do you have a Stevenson-Washington address for a Planning Commission member, is that, or is that of the third one down, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's her mailing address. She.
Does she live here?
Lives here, but that was her mailing address.
Okay, okay.
I think when, when she, um, was appointed to the Planning Commission, she had just moved to Cascade Locks and had changed, I don't know if it's changed since. That would be, it has, Kathy's good.
I think it might have something to do with the business or something, not quite sure, but she physically lived here, but that's her mailing, where she got her.
I would assume our committee people need to live in town, but.
Hey, just point of clarification for me, when you guys talk about, you know, filling positions and filling out an application, does the whole city council interview? I mean, it used to be just, you know, the, the mayor would kinda make a recommendation to council based upon whatever arts and sciences existed, and, uh, it was either, you know, usually approved.
Right, yeah, and the charter creates that, the, the mayor appoints. The, the mayor appoints people to committees.
What's the resolution?
What's that?
What is the resolution?
Resolution what?
All the events.
Yeah, the, the mayor...
How is the resolution?
Right.
So, the city council is not gonna be interviewing all the candidates for committee?
Well, that's how we've chosen to do it for the Public Safety Task Force. That's, that's the process we set up a week ago. We, we decided to come in on Saturday.
How about these, is that, I mean, that's what I'm trying to find, is that an exception or is that...
Well, I think we're just, we're discussing that right now.
Okay.
What, what's your thought on it?
I don't wanna interview.
You don't wanna do the interview? When I, when I, when we, I talked about the planning commission. In a previous appointment process was that three members from council conducted interviews, made a recommendation to the mayor, and the mayor made the appointment.
Okay, so it wasn't the whole council?
It wasn't the whole council, it was, it was, you could call it a subcommittee, it was a, it was a public meeting.
I think there was two, I remember there was two when I went to the planning commission.
I wasn't involved in it when you went onto planning commission, so I don't know. There were just two people. But it could be, it could be just the, just me, I could do the interviews. Could be a couple of you, three of you make a recommendation. What's your thought on that, Mark?
I think the input from us and you would make the decision. That's, I like that.
Well, I think you've gotta do this, I, I think it's tough, for me, it's a tough one, because there are some, I think there are some committees that you wanna be aware of, let it on, because committees you don't, you don't necessarily have to be as...
Well, which ones do you think should be more better?
Process, uh, well, I think, uh, like mine, that's important, but, not to say that I'm important, but I think there are, there are some that you wanna, um, maybe get a certain specific person or, you know, and certainly, um, for that, and, and so that, a vetting process for that perhaps. So that's the tough part. I, I would rather have a process that's consistent, you know. But, but I think this, and part of this thing leaves for some consensus, even not full consensus, you know, I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I, I agree with Gail, but I don't know if we wanna be here...
You don't wanna do that.
I don't know, we wanna be going through, yeah, but I do believe there are some that are, that I think, I, out there's a process where the council goes, hey, this is what we're doing on this committee. Do we all wanna be involved in this or, you know, can we just take this people? I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know how to handle that.
So, well, we could agree to, you know, designate a couple counselors that aren't us to do the interviews and make a recommendation.
The, the other is, I agree with Tom, there's some that are less, less important. And some of these committees will go wanting for committee members. So if you have one person apply for two spots, are you gonna interview them or just appoint them? So I, I think there's a scaling that would have to take place, you know, at the time.
So if you have an application, and it's a standardized application, and the policy is if there's more applications than vacancies, that you conduct interviews?
Could, could be that.
Somebody does.
Yeah, interviews will be conducted.
I, I like the idea that council, there's multiple people interviewing, because it can go, you could have a mayor and they, they obviously won't last very long, but, 'cause they're only in there for two years, but they can just appoint the cronies. And, and that has happened here. And I, I think it's better to spread it out, that, that there's more, an open process.
Yeah, and I think ultimately you can't get away from, unless you change, unless we do a charter review and change the charter, you can't get away from the part of the charter that says the mayor makes the appointments, subject to the approval of council. But at least a process that, that includes more people. And I, I definitely agree with that, I'd be consistent with that. So, I think we'll take those recommendations, probably come back with something for, for an action as well.
Okay.
Okay? And that puts us down to, we did, we talked about tourism already, we have a plan for that. Okay? So, any other comments for discussion on boards and commissions? Okay, hearing none, that moves us to our next item on the agenda, which is adjournment. It's been moved by Gail, seconded by Randy, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? None, motion carries.
Sorry about being late on this, this paper.
Hey, thanks for, thanks for...